Good evening. The March 21st, 2022 Legislative Meeting of the Anorundel County Council is now in session. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. And please call, excuse me, please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. Stand. I ask that you pray with me in a manner consistent with your individual faith. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today and for each mind and heart that's in the presence of this room. Guide us faithfully in the matters before us. Give us unity of spirit even when we differ in opinion. Help us to carefully consider the information that is shared tonight. Strengthen us as we make tough decisions and let us not forget our role as service to Anorundel County in your name. Amen. And now I'm excited to welcome PAC 727 to the front. They are gathering for their last meeting as a den before they go on to their individual scout roles. And they are going to lead us in the pledge. Gentlemen, when you are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Thank you, PAC 727. That was lovely. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have no signups. Madam Secretary, did we receive any in the last few minutes?
We did not.
All right. Thank you very much. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table, state your name and address for the record. And just to clarify, this is for items not on the agenda. All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? Well, I will have to say then, we have a special presentation. It is our legislative council's last evening before her retirement in a few weeks or, I guess, down.
One week.
Not that she's counting, one week. So I would like to present this. I'm going to read it up here and then I'll come down and present it to you. This is from Anorundel County, Maryland. The county council citation presented to Linda M. Schuett in honor of your retirement. Whereas having previously served as county attorney and providing the county with your most excellent legal skills, you graciously gave just a bit more of your time in recent years and diligently served as legislative counsel to the county council. And whereas the wit and wisdom you have provided to the county council will not soon be forgotten, now therefore, the county council of Anorundel County, Maryland hereby recognizes in sincere gratitude your steadfast devotion to the county council and your service to Anorundel County and its citizens and wishes you the very best in your retirement. And we've got a little Italian and Spanish here. Mil gracias, la mejor de las suertes en tu nueva etapa. And I will bring this down.
You want to say a few words?
I might cry. I really can't tell you how wonderful it's been working. I haven't cried.
And I'm just going to add a few words of it has been wonderful to work with you, you know, hashing through the language of bills and amendments and, you know, talking through the work of my colleagues to try and figure out where I stand. And you've been enormously helpful and I will miss working with you. So best, I hope you fully enjoy your well-earned retirement. And if any of my colleagues would like to, yep, I had a feeling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Linda, I think it's been 15 years since we've worked on either legislation, community aspects and.
Practically a baby, we're.
I know. But I can't thank you enough, the knowledge, the effort. I know you've not just worked in the county, but even throughout the state in making a difference. And I appreciate that as a friend, as a councilman, and I think I can speak of everyone up here that you've really done a great service and you're going to be missed. And I would just want to thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Lacy.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March 7th, 2022.
The meeting was called to order by Chair Radveen at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Travis Knoll, Lead Pastor of Nichols Beth United Methodist Church of Odenton, Maryland, and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Pruski. The meeting was held in the county council chambers, Arundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2022?
So moved, Lacy.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of March 7th, 2022 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 3022, An Ordnance Concerning Anorundel County Open Data Act. Bill number 3122, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, BRAC Mixed Use Development. Bill number 3222, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Admissions and Amusement Tax, Tax Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 622, Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Properties in Severn, Maryland, from Ribera Development LLC, Utilizing Funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
All right. We have a good number of bills to get through tonight and we have many people in attendance this evening. As a courtesy, I would like to ask that we change the order of the agenda. Can I have a motion to hear and vote on bills number 23-22, 8-22, 17-22 through 26-22, and 16-22 out of order?
So moved, Councilman Pruski.
All right. We have a motion to hear and vote on bills number 23-22, 8-22, 17-22 through 26-22, and 16-22 out of order. Actually, did we have a second? We need a second.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion.
Ms. Pickard. Aye. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to hear and vote on bill numbers 23, 22, 8, 22, 17, 22 through 26, 22, and 16, 22 out of order has been passed.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 23-22.
Bill number 23, 22, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Lease Agreement for Quiet Waters Retreat.
Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you just clarify the order in which we're going to proceed on bills in light of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So it will be 23-22, 8-22, 17-22, 18-22, 19-22, 20-22, 21-22, 22-22, 24-22, 25-22, 26-22, 16-22.
Thank you.
Yep. We did, there was no, we had no members of, what's that? Okay. I think we're all set. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 23-22.
Bill number 23, 22, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Lease Agreement for Quiet Waters Retreat.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is an administration bill. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Jessica Lays and Ms. Erica Matthews, as well as Mr. Greg Swain. We also have Chris Daniels. The bill was previously discussed at the March 15th work session. It approves a lease agreement between the county and the Chesapeake Conservation Center LLC. As you can recall from the work session discussion, the county purchased the Quiet Waters property back in 2019. This was Resolution 3819. It was a unanimous vote. There was a fire that destroyed the structure on the property. The bill before you approves a lease making good on the public-private partnership originally outlined in 3819. It leases 5.8 acres of land to the Conservation Center, the Chesapeake Conservation Center, to build the retreat. And once the structure is built, it shall become lease property of the county for the, sorry, let me say that. Once the structure is built, the structure itself shall become the lease property for the remainder of the 30-year term. The representatives of the Conservancy, as well as Wreckin' Parks and Central Services and Office of Law are all here for us tonight. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Oh, and to be clear, sorry, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I didn't turn my page first. The Chesapeake Conservancy contributed $2 million to that purchase in exchange for the long-term lease.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I just have more of a policy question as far as lease negoti, you know, when you all are working on leasing or lease agreements, is there an internal policy between the department that is working on the lease and the department that will then carry out the interactions of the lease in perpetuity? Because I'm trying to understand, when these bills come to us, we don't have the ability to amend the leasing agreement that's already been done. It's a yea or nay. But if we had some indication or some opportunity to weigh in during that process, or if the department had opportunity to weigh in during that process, I'm wondering if that's something that's done, if that's something that could be done, if it's not being done. That's a few questions.
Turn over to our county attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Greg Swain, county attorney. You know, I think typically with leases, you are working through the Office of Central Services and then the agency that's going to be working with the property. This was a little bit of a unique situation. The Office of Law was heavily involved in this property, really starting in 2016, because at that time, there were some legal issues with the owner and with some previous development efforts that the owners had made on the property. So this one sort of started with the Office of Law. And then we worked very closely with the Department of Recreation and Parks because one of the attributes that made this property so desirable was its proximity to Quiet Waters Park. So they have been involved and were very involved in the negotiations because they'd be the one who actually were controlling the balance of the property that was not going to be subject to the lease. That being said, the Office of Central Services is always involved in reviewing leases, et cetera. So I'm happy if they have any, if either Central Services or Wreckin' Parks wants to add anything to that. But, you know, I can tell you, one of the reasons I'm here tonight is I've been working personally on this property since 2016 and have sort of, and it was involved, the financing involved, the United States federal government, it involved the state government. So this is really, you know, it's one of the public types of public-private partnerships that we want to encourage because it really did, meaning the participation of Chesapeake Conservancy, it really did make this acquisition possible because of the nature of this property.
Madam Chair.
You may continue.
Thank you. Mr. Swain, I appreciate that answer. And Amanda Fiedler, District 5, for the record. The reason that I ask is that I don't think that this council or perhaps any previous council has seen a 30-year with potentially 90 years involved in lease language. So I just wanted to understand the process and how we got to here. And, you know, we are an up or down vote this evening on the lease agreement. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I thank you to Mr. Swain for answering my numerous questions, actually all of you at the work session. I know I definitely have some concerns with the lease, the way it's written. Do we have any other leases where, A, it's 90 years like this, where the tenant has the exclusive right to re-up or not, and the county just has to deal with it one way or the other? And do we have any other leases where the county is obligated to reimburse a tenant for construction costs in the event that the county terminates the lease, even if the termination would be for cause?
Greg Swain, county attorney. One of the other fairly unique attributes of this lease is that it is in effect a ground lease. So what the Conservancy is renting is a piece of ground and they are putting a building on it. I would suspect, and I would leave it to Central Services to verify this, but the majority of our leases are for county buildings, building space, et cetera, or unimproved property. Because it's a ground lease, one of the unique attributes of that is at the, and we're talking about a sort of a commercial ground lease versus a residential ground lease. But one of the attributes of a ground lease is that at the termination or expiration of the lease, the improvements revert to the owner of the ground. So one of the concerns Chesapeake Conservancy had is that, okay, we're going to spend 10 or 12 million dollars to build this building and then you're going to kick us out. And you're going to take over the improvements because that's the way the law is. So what we built into this lease, and I believe it's, I'm sure you are familiar with the lease provision, but it is on page 20 of the lease, is that if the county terminates the lease, then the county has an obligation to reimburse Chesapeake Conservancy for the cost of the improvements. So that's one component of it. It's up to the county. It's only if the county terminates the lease, not if Chesapeake Conservancy terminates the lease. Secondly, if we do terminate the lease and we do have that obligation, that obligation is subject to county appropriation and availability of funds, which means it comes back before this council to approve that. So they wanted protection for the money they spent, and that's understandable. We want a protection as well, so we would have control going forward. That's how those two provisions sort of fell into place. And again, I would defer to the Office of Central Services as to whether we have any other ground leases. They're fairly uncommon these days. Most of the time you see them, they're in the residential context and there's different laws applied to those types of leases.
Does it, I don't see in paragraph 23 where it says it's subject to the county council.
That is not paragraph 23.
Okay.
It is paragraph 31.
Okay. Further down. Okay, thank you. Got it. Thank you very much. That's helpful.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Swain, with respect to the 90 years, how did you all come up with that as the 90-year life cycle? Because I can't imagine the building, when you sort of think about a ground lease and improvements to a ground lease, I mean, I don't do a lot of commercial work, but I have seen things like this before. It seems like a very long time horizon. I also have the question about the depreciation because you were talking about sort of if the county kicks out the tenant, then we have to pay them, but then after year 10, we start the depreciation in year 11. But then there's something in here about the county has to pay 25% of the increase to the appraisal in the value of the property, which doesn't seem like that's tied to any year. At least it doesn't specify that to me in looking at it. So I guess my, I have two questions as to where I'm at right now. The first question is about how you arrived at a 90-year term, you know, sort of this 30 with two renewals.
Right.
And the second is, is this 25% increase in value tied to a certain time horizon? Or are we looking 90 years from now? We're going to be looking at a 25% payout to them, even if they've run out the whole lease?
So as far as the 30-year with the two renewable terms, one of the things we talked about was a typical term for a ground lease, which is 99 years. And we weren't going to do that. So what we decided was, and you're probably right, as far as the functional life of a building, it's probably closer to 30 to 60 years. So that's how we arrived at that renewal portion. As far as the formula for depreciation and then the 25% of the increased appraised value of the property, that was, again, you know, your depreciation is kind of going in one direction and the appraisal potentially going in a different direction. One of the aspects of this property is, and I don't know that we've talked about it that much, but this property that was acquired is almost 20 acres. So the use that this site, that Chesapeake Conservancy will be making of this property initially will be about 5.82 acres for the construction, and then it's going to shrink to the footprint of the building. So the site, the entire 20 acres is encumbered by two easements. One of, well, not two easements, one easement, which is the easement from the U.S. Navy, which restricts future development other than that 14,000 square feet, which is the footprint of the building. And then the other restriction is from program open space, which restricts a little bit less of the property, but basically says you have to keep it in recreational use forever. And there's some out for that, but basically that's forever. So what, you know, we understand that there's going to be increased value, et cetera, but because of the restrictions on the property, we didn't think that would be overly generous to the Conservancy to put that formula in for that type of adjustment.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a point of information in that it's my understanding during the time of urban renewal in downtown Glen Burnie, one of the private investors there that currently occupy the food line and the extending shopping center have a 99-year ground lease. They don't actually own the property, but they did make the initial investment to create that shopping center and have been leasing it out since the early 2000s and still occupy that. So it is, while I don't have that lease in front of me and I certainly can't speak as a representative of Central Services, it is part of ground lease operating procedure. So just thought I would share.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Go ahead.
County Attorney Greg Swain. The closer you get to Baltimore City, the more you're going to see ground leases because they're very common in Baltimore City. And as you get further away, people just don't use them that much anymore, so.
Thank you for that insight. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I think Ms. Lays, this question is for you, and thank you for all the time you have spent on the phone answering a lot of my questions. I appreciate it. I am struggling with the fact that now this property was purchased three years ago at this point-ish. And while I know you all divided up the property so that some of it used POS money and some of it didn't, this portion being the portion that did not use product open space dollars. The rest of the property did use product open space dollars. And I'm trying to understand in the grand plan for these, you know, nearly 20 acres and kind of what's going on, where are we in making the rest of this project open to the general public? And as part of that, the benefit, if we do this lease and it is a public-private partnership, you know, we look to have the public get a benefit from it, right? So help me understand from the policy side of it, where all of that benefit is coming from here.
Jessica Lays, Department of Recreation and Parks. So I'm going to start with your public benefit question. So first off, by partnering with the Chesapeake Conservancy, we were able to acquire the property. So 19 acres were acquired through the partnership. Without Chesapeake Conservancy, we wouldn't have been able to leverage the REPI funds, nor would we be able to backfill with the POS. So POS does put a layer of responsibility or restrictions on the property to be open to the public. So as soon as we bought the property, we started having things like first-day hikes, guided hikes, events, having managed access to the property. We certainly didn't want to open it up because it was still a risk, that there was still buildings on it, it hadn't been secured, but a ranger could take you over there, hike around, and tell you more about the property. So right off the bat, the public did have access to the property, just in a managed way. The second benefit is just the park amenities that we're super excited to put on the retreat property. It will be an extension of Quiet Waters Park. We'll connect it over by where the dog park currently is by providing additional parking improvements to the trail system so that you can now hike all the way through the retreat. We're looking to do not only interpretive trails, but also some planting, both meadows, native trees. We will be putting a restroom building on that side of the property, as well as pavilions for gatherings that will overlook the South River. And then a long-term plan is on the pond and having an overlook to the pond and some kayak-guided programs off of the pond for more water access. So that's all in addition to what I would say is the third benefit, and that's just the community space in the building that Chesapeake Conservancy is looking to build and the public programming that Chesapeake Conservancy will help promote and bringing people more to the retreat side of the property. But fourth, and almost more importantly, as we venture into the P3 world, is the partnerships. So Wreckin' Parks relies a lot on our workforce, but also on our volunteers and on our partners. So people like the Chesapeake Conservancy and the nonprofits that they look to bring into the building will become an arm of Wreckin' Parks as well. And we'll have a good working relationship and work with them on educational programs, information sharing, and just collaboration in general. So I think the benefit of having the Conservancy as our partner is going to certainly outweigh any costs that we might have with growing pains as we develop the property. Your question about POS is how did we carve out the POS money versus the Conservancy money versus the REPI easement? And we actually took out a map, and that's the five acres that you heard us talk about that the Conservancy has the lease on specifically for the building. The rest of the property was carved out for POS use and will be where we put the amenities that I just listed, and that will be open for the public, just like Quiet Waters is, from sunrise to sunset. And then the third part of the question was the timing. And Erica, refresh my memory on our construction schedule and what the timing is on POS.
Good evening. Erica Matthews with the Department of Recreation and Parks. We are in the master plan process. We just presented to the Friends Group last week. Our next steps are for us to do a public meeting with the community. We anticipate that happening in April or May. We're in contract initiation for the design phases and we're moving forward.
I have one more. Thank you.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Swain, I believe at the work session, we heard that the construction of this building was somewhere nine and a half million dollars or so, and that's no small amount of money. What happens if halfway through, funding falls through, and we get a 30-day notice of termination by the tenant and we're left with a half-constructed building? Because I don't see anything in here that gives the county any kind of protection or commitment that the building's actually going to be finished in any specific time period.
Well, Chesapeake Conservancy can certainly talk to that. They do have a workout schedule. My understanding from the Conservancy is they have funding in place.
Is that true?
Thank you. Mark Conway, I'm the executive vice president of Chesapeake Conservancy. Yes, we do have funding in place and we're ready to go. Funding's not an issue.
Okay. And that's been, Wreckin' Parks is all good, but you guys have seen it all, you're all, you've seen the funding, et cetera.
We actually have one of the funders here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And, oh, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sounds like we could see the checkbook if we wanted to. I just really just want to congratulate you all on putting together a fabulous deal, doing the appropriate due diligence for something that will be part of a crown jewel of Anorundel County and checking off some of those boxes and goals we have of boosting Conservancy initiatives and education and all of that stuff. And since we're not the county's lawyers, I don't mind sitting here listening and trusting that you've, you know, all the lawyering was done appropriately, especially when Mr. Swain was on the job. So I'm happy to support this bill.
All right. I think this would be a good time to get to our public hearing on bill number 23-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on bill number 23-22. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And I do have one name on my sign up, which is Matthew Earl. And you may have a seat. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes of the floor.
All right. Just making sure it's on. Matthew Earl, 39 Poplar Point Road, Edgewater, Maryland, 21037. Okay. And thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Matt Earl. I currently live in Edgewater and have lived in Anarundel County for 20 years with my wife and two children. My parents are Jim and Sylvia Earl of Crownsville, who have lived in Anarundel County for over 25 years. And they're sitting right there. During their time here, they have been active philanthropists, supporting the community through their charitable foundation, the Helena Foundation, which has significantly contributed to many local organizations, especially those focused on the environment, the arts, and education. In 2016, Dad learned of the almost 20-acre parcel about in Quiet Waters Park where developers were attempting to gain the legal right to build houses. After touring the property, he knew that he could not let private homes spoil this pristine natural area. Instead, Dad envisioned a beautiful site where the public could enjoy the views and waterfront access, and a center where several environmental organizations could work together to increase their collaboration, knowledge, and effectiveness. Soon, Dad enlisted the Chesapeake Conservancy to implement this concept. In the next several years, Conservancy President Joel Dunn worked shrewdly to find other funding sources to leverage my parents' donation into a public-private collaboration, which included the Navy, Maryland Program Open Space, and Anarundel County Program Open Space. The land acquisition was successfully completed in 2019. As part of this partnership, the county and the Conservancy executed an agreement to lease, which permits the Conservancy to build the Earl Conservation Center within the 20-acre parcel. Since then, architectural firm Zigger Sneed has created-
Mr. Earl, I need you to conclude your remarks.
Okay. So basically, my parents are financing construction of the environmental center with no cost to Anarundel County. As an Anarundel County resident and member of the Conservancy Board, I ask that you vote to approve the lease before you, as detailed in Bill 23-22. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Earl. If there is anyone else, and also Mr. and Mrs. Earl, if there is anyone else here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 23-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 23-22.
Bill Number 23-22, An Ordinance Concerning Approval of the Lease Agreement for Quiet Waters Retreat.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just wanted to give a couple of brief comments, just because I feel like I asked so many questions over the last couple of days, and I very much appreciate everyone's time. I have some concerns with the length of the lease. I have some concerns with that paragraph 23. But I do very much appreciate the, the answers from Ms. Lacy on the public benefit and, and how the public's going to be able to use this property. I'm, I'm looking forward to the project open space dollars and, and making the park truly open, as opposed to just the managed hikes, but really kind of truly open for, for everyone. I do think that the project is, is going to be beautiful. Thank you all for coming this evening. That's really, that's really great. So I am going to support this, but I do, this is the second lease we've seen now where I have concerns with the process about how it got there and how there's provisions in here. And I'm just saying this, that I don't know how we make those improvements in the process, but I, I agree with what Councilwoman Fiedler said, that there are times where it feels like there are certain provisions, and by the time we get to see it, all we can do is give it an up or down vote, where, you know, maybe there's a way for us to get our concerns out earlier in the process somehow. But with all that, I, I know you all have spent a lot of time answering my questions, and I very much appreciate it, so thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take a moment to thank the Earl family for being here and for your nearly, it sounds like $12 million investment in this county, because it's not just the $2 million that you put up, it's the additional nine and a half that you're financing. So thank you. I had the chance to meet Mr. and Mrs. Earl in 2019, when we did purchase that property, the county did. I think you were there too, Mr. Earl, Matt Earl, and yeah, it was a long time ago, it feels like forever ago, but it was very nice to meet you there, and, and I'm disappointed to hear that the building is gone, but I think that this new building is going to be really great for the county. I do have some of the concerns about the lease, but I also think this is an example of where we have some private partners coming in and leveraging some real money for the county that's allowing us to do something that's going to be great for generations, so thank you.
And I will just also add my chorus, or my thanks to the chorus, to the Earls. I am so thrilled that this is in District 6, and it's in Quiet Waters Park. I, I went to one of the guided hikes, it was the first-day hike back, it was in the before days, on January 1st, 2020, I believe. And it is a beautiful spot, so when you get the opportunity, which there are opportunities, it's not, you know, fully open to the public yet, but there are opportunities, you have to keep your eyes open. It is an amazing spot, and it is such a treasure that it will be available for the public, the community, not just a few wealthy homeowners who would have been able to build their, their homes there, but it'll be available for everyone in one of the most beautiful spots that I've seen in Anarundel County. So thank you very much. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have to concur, and I hope you understand the questions that we had here this evening. We have to get into the minute details of things like this, and you have done an incredible thing by doing this, and you have certainly and are certainly leaving a legacy, so thank you.
All right. Seeing no further lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 23-22.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 23-22 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 8-22 as amended.
Bill Number 822, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan.
Again, this is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. Our Environmental Policy Director, Mr. Matt Johnston, is joining us. Team OPZ, Christina Pampa, Michael Stringer, and Stephen Kai-Ziegler. Ms. Erica Matthews is also in the audience if needed, and I think Kelly Kenny is the attorney on this one. So this, discussed this bill a couple of times. As a reminder, it was heard at the February 22nd and March 7th meetings. We understand there are still some more amendments coming. To recap, this plan sets up a framework for voluntary actions to conserve the largest connected natural areas in the county, as well as investing in green space in underserved communities. We're happy to answer any questions the council may have, listen to public testimony, and discuss the amendments.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 8-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive any submissions ahead of time, Madam Chair.
All right. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 8-22 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. There was no one who signed up on this, for this either. All right. In that case, if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, you may come up at this time. State your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 8-22 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8-22 as amended.
Bill Number 822, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan.
All right. I understand we have four amendments tonight. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5.
Amendment Number 5. This amendment requires an annual report on the status of the progress of any conservation goals referenced in the 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Pickard. Thank you, Madam- Oh, I'm sorry. I should really let the sponsor of the motion speak first, if that's all right. I'm sorry. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I think this is pretty self-explanatory. A constituent reached out to me and said, you know, it's great that the plan says we'd like to have these goals of conserving a certain number of acres, but what good is that if we don't actually report on it every, every year, every so often? And I said, hey, that's a great idea. So that's all this does, is it just says, hey, let us know how you're moving towards those goals, and whether X number of acres every year has been conserved, et cetera.
Thank you. And actually, I will allow the administration to respond.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. The, the administration appreciates the intent of this amendment. We understand there's another amendment coming that has also language regarding an annual report, reviewing the amendment languages. The administration prefers the language in the later amendment. The larger timeframe will allow a better, more comprehensive annual report. So I'll ask staff to weigh in if I mischaracterize that.
Good evening. Steve Kai-Ziegler. We completely agree with Mr. Barron. We like the idea of an annual report. We just think that Amendment Number 8 captures what needs to be covered better.
All right. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the, the privilege to talk about reporting with Ms. Pampa, and I understand Mr. Michael Stringer. And while, while Amendment Number 5 is, is, it does require an annual report, one of the issues that I stumbled upon with a previous amendment was that we were, I was attempting to put regulation into a non-regulatory plan, whereas my amendment landed actually, actually in the code. So it's better to put the reporting requirement actually into the code if we are going to continue with the non-regulatory nature of, of the infrastructure plan. So as we get through the amendments, there's also an issue with the timing as far as doing an annual report that's due the first day of the year. It'd be better to give planning and zoning actually a stretch, you know, report on the calendar year and give us a report maybe at the end of the fiscal year to actually give them time to prepare a report. Other than that, I would, I look at my Amendment Number 8 as a friendly amendment to just take care of some of those issues in Amendment Number 5.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tacking onto what Councilwoman Pickard just said, if it's a friendly amendment, if Number 5, Amendment 5 is really sort of more aspirational, and Amendment 8 is more directive because it's in the code, it seems like both could coexist. Am I mistaken on that? It seems as though, while you certainly could have Amendment 5, and it says aspirationally, this is what we want in the plan, the actual regulatory language will also be in 8. Seems like the two of them are able to work in conjunction with one another, that they don't necessarily conflict.
Not so sure. I'm going to ask the planners to-
Good evening. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. The big difference, and what I see as a conflict between Amendment, proposed Amendment Number 5 and draft Amendment Number 8, is the timing. Because one is requiring that we report out on January 1. So let me give you an example. The Maryland Department of Planning requires that we do an annual report every year, and that annual report is a calendar year report, and then we start pulling all the data for it in January. The report is due to MDE, I'm sorry, MDP by July 1st. This would be similar. If you read the draft Amendment Number 8, there's certain work that would be done as part of this annual report, and it's going to take some time to do that. And so the, the way the calendar is set out in Amendment 8 is preferable to the staff at the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, I follow, Madam Chair.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So with that in mind, and I understand, and I sort of anticipated that was going to be what you said, which one is binding? The one that's in the code or the one that's in the plan?
Well, I believe the one in the code, Mr. Volkey, because-
I agree. That's what I thought. So with that, even though the Amendment 5 could pass, again, it gets to my point that it's more aspirational, so if there is a conflict between the two, what's in the code is going to be what Office of Planning and Zoning actually has to do, because that's what's in the code, if I'm understanding correctly. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
I see Mr. Kai-Ziegler's light on. Did you want to add to this?
No, I was, Steve Kai-Ziegler, Office of Planning and Zoning. No, I was just agreeing with Ms. Pampa.
Okay. All right. And I see Ms. Hare and Ms. Fiedler's light. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. If, if everyone agrees that Amendment Number 8 accomplishes Amendment Number 5, and it's a friendly, I don't mind withdrawing Number 5 just to have Amendment Number 8 if it's a friendly. We don't need to make this more complicated than it is. I'm, I'm happy to do that. So I would withdraw my motion to adopt Amendment Number 5.
And we would need to withdraw the second?
And I will withdraw my second.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Did we get everything? All right. In that case, Amendment Number 5 has been withdrawn, and we will move on to Amendment Number 6. We will get to Amendment Number 8 after 6 and 7. All right. So Amendment Number 6. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6.
Amendment Number 6. This amendment makes Bill Number 822 contingent upon certain notice to property owners of their property being newly included in the 2022 Green Infrastructure Network, allows for property owners to indicate whether their property is available for conservation or subject to owner plans, which will be reflected in the 2022 Green Infrastructure Network, requires the 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan be revised to show properties subject to property owner plans from the Green Infrastructure Network, and delays the effective date of any ordinances that rely on the Green Infrastructure Network.
All right. And this is Ms. Hare and Ms. Lacy's amendment, so whichever of you would like to speak first may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I'll try to keep this brief. We talked a lot about notice at the last meeting on this bill, because I had a previous amendment that, that had a similar, you know, mail-out notice and give folks an opportunity to reply back. Folks didn't like that in the last one, you kind of had this opt-out period, and I understood that. So Councilwoman Lacy and I collaborated on kind of how can we still accomplish giving folks notice and giving them an opportunity to take a look at the plan, and also then giving the county more detailed information, which would enable the county to better target their efforts on conservation. And so I believe this accomplishes that. Councilwoman Lacy can certainly, you know, address that as well. But here, we're giving folks notice, they get the opportunity to say, hey, I would love for my property to be conserved. Yes, it's available for conservation. If you want to target dollars over here, absolutely send them my way. Or, hey, I am planning in a few years to try and put a back deck on my property, so this area might not be where you want to target your dollars. And the council or the county gets to take that, the planning and zoning, and, and create another layer on the map, and just have another color there, which I think gives the county more information to move forward in that targeted, targeted effect. And that's really, that's all this does. It creates that new layer and a new color, and allows kind of everybody to operate with a more full information. So with that, I would ask for your support.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
All right. Ms. Lacy, did you want to add anything? All right. I will allow the administration to respond.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Administration appreciates the intent of the amendment, but we do oppose. I think we've, we've talked about this a lot. This is a guide, this is a plan, this is not a regulatory document. I'm going to ask the experts to my right, probably just to go straight down the table, and outline a couple of the concerns that we have with the amendment.
Sure. So I'll start, Mr. Matt Johnston. Mr. Matt Johnston, Environmental Policy Director for Anarundel County. Thanks, little brevity tonight. Long night. But just want to start, we've got a lot of folks here, experts, to talk about this. We did go through an unprecedented public review process, perhaps unequaled only by the Plan 2040 public review process, and we're very proud of that process, and we think that this is kind of, with the hatching on the map and the forced outreach for a small period of time, is actually going to shortchange what we could really do on an annual basis. to shortchange what we could really do on an annual basis. We are absolutely on board with revising this map and doing public outreach to revise that map and fix technical errors every single year. And we think, once again, that Amendment Number Eight, as drafted, gets us to where the administration would like to be, to make changes to that map every single year. So with that, I'll hand it over to the experts who would be doing this work, for them to tell you more.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'll be Mr. Kaisigler for this. But again, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning officer. Again, we also have Christina Pampa, Michael Stringer, and Erica Matthews, some of the key people who worked on this project over the last few years. I too agree with Mr. Barron. We appreciate the intent here for as much public engagement as we can. However, the Office of Planning and Zoning does strongly oppose Amendment Number Six for a number of key reasons that we'll discuss in detail with staff in a moment. But summarizing those reasons, we believe this Amendment One is completely unnecessary as the Green Infrastructure Plan is a non-regulatory plan, and previous amendments to the plan have further clarified the plan as non-regulatory. Second, it initiates an ominous precedent for future plans from OPZ's perspective. And last, the amendment minimizes and essentially undermines the entire public engagement process that's been used to date to develop this plan. There's a significant collective experience of staff at the table and the team that prepared the plan. Just the four staffers from Office of Planning and Zoning and Recreation Park to my, to my right have over 100 years of planning or engineering experience. Each has at least one advanced degree, and collectively, we've worked in over 20 different jurisdictions. That is only the project team represented at the table. If you add the staff and the audience and other staff on the project team, the collective amount of experience is over 300 years. There has already been extensive public outreach in the planning process. None of us engaged in this planning process have ever experienced or applied a contingency approach to keep planning after a bill has been approved to adopt a plan. We do not see this amendment as a viable practice, much less a best practice, especially for a plan that does not regulate land. We believe it minimizes and subverts the extensive public outreach that's already been conducted to date. We are now very concerned that the county council is potentially setting a precedent for future plans and other land use legislation. And I'll end my comments with perhaps what would be a rhetorical question. And I'm really not expecting an answer, but it's something to think about. If the county council is willing to pass this amendment, is it the county council's intention to apply this approach to future plans, things that you will be seeing in near months, with the Water and Sewer Master Plan update or the Land Preservation Park and Recreation Plan? So that concludes my remarks. I'd like to turn it over to Christina Pampa, who will identify a number of what we would call technical issues with how this could be implemented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. As Mr. Ziegler stated, I'm Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to speak with you about the Green Infrastructure Plan and this proposed amendment. So we are concerned, the Office of Planning and Zoning is concerned that this amendment creates a significant amount of work for staff but will not substantively change the plan. Every property in the network currently is subject to property owner plans, regardless of whether this special mapping designation is created or not. Property in the network can be conserved, or it can be developed. This was true under the 2002 Greenways Plan, and it would be true under the 2022 Green Infrastructure Plan, if adopted in its current form without this amendment. And remember, we do still conserve a lot of land through subdivision, through forest conservation easements, open space set-asides, and floodplain dedications. As a taxpayer in the county, I don't believe this is good use of taxpayer dollars, both for the cost of doing the mailing and the time that staff will need to devote to processing comments and making map changes. This will take staff away from actual work program priorities. The amendment that passed for Plan 2040 that required OPZ to set up a web map for all consistency changes took two full-time equivalent staff three months to finalize. We would need to pull staff off of existing priority projects in order to comply with Part Two of the amendment. And I will note that on the consistency changes for Plan 2040, we've had 35 hits on that website, of which 25 have been unique IP addresses. I mean, I personally have visited it about three times, so I'm in that 10 that gets us up to 35. So a mailing, to put notice out for this plan, would need to go to approximately 13,000 properties at a cost of just under $11,000. And the county's contractor for mass printing and mailing, Corporate Mailing Services, has told staff that because of supply chain issues, it's taking six to eight weeks to get envelopes for a large mailing like this. We would look at an, at an alternative, maybe sending a postcard, but we are concerned about timing issues if we were to do a traditional notification. So that concludes my remarks on the technical aspects, and now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Stringer.
Thank you, Ms. Pampa. Thank you, members of council. Again, Michael Stringer, Senior Planner with Office of Planning and Zoning. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Appreciate your, your deep thoughts about how to best implement this kind of plan. As Mr. Ziegler mentioned earlier, we did a lot of community engagement for this plan. I'd even back up to 2017 when staff first began to update this effort. We discussed this a little bit, or extensively, in our February meeting about this plan. But just to remind folks that, you know, we had many meetings around the county for the General Development Plan, in which the environmental issues, land conservation, always came up as a top priority. We followed up with that in planning in 2021, hosting multiple virtual public forums, putting out information through emails, blast emails, and newsletters, getting together working groups to talk about this with both experts in conservation, like the Chesapeake Conservancy, as well as real estate experts, like the Maryland Building Industry Associate and Association. We held meetings with Department of Recreation and Parks as they went through their public engagement process for the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, hosting public meetings in each of the council districts. So as I stated before, there was extensive public engagement already conducted, including opportunities to review the map directly online multiple times. We made efforts to reach out to low-income communities, communities of color, through the, through the Communities of Hope programs in West County, Brooklyn Park, Annapolis, and South County. There's always more we could do. Doing outreach after the fact, though, becomes really confusing and challenging. When we go out and do messaging for the public for public engagement, we think a lot about how do we frame this? What expectations do we set for the community? How do we best message it? That's going to be really challenging to do in an after-the-fact outreach effort. The council have already, you know, had its adoption measure. We'll be saying a note afterward, asking people to kind of comment, but not be able to substantively change it, to just be able to provide this information, whether they want to develop or not. But again, this plan doesn't restrict you from developing or not. So I'm afraid we'd really get to cross-messaging here that's going to be confusing for folks. The sheer volume of it will be challenging as well. 13,000 mailings, even if we got, you know, 2% return, that's going to be thousands of calls for us to respond to. So as we think about the staff effort, both to set up and then to be able to manage this information, it's, as stated earlier, it's going to take dedicated staff time, weeks and weeks and weeks, to be able to do this, time that we would be otherwise dedicating to other projects. We've also seen disinformation as we've gone through this planning process. If you recall, last summer, when we had a public review process, and we made a map available for people to comment on, there was an anonymous ad posted in the Capitol telling people to, you know, directing them to the map and encouraging them to opt out of the plan. You know, that risk of disinformation, I think, would be spread here, again, making the communication about this all the more challenging. So with that, you know, we have a lot of concerns about how we could actually implement this with the way that it's framed. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I have a number of comments. Mr. Kaisigler, I would be fine adding this to other plans that are regulating private property. So if those plans are coming in front of us and they are regulating private property, I certainly would like to see a component like this. Clearly, the last plan has not been followed, Ms. Pampa, as you know, because otherwise, there wouldn't be the development that we've seen in those areas, which is part of why you're redoing this plan. So we get that. The $11,000 and the six to eight weeks, I'm assuming you're going to work with a vendor. I get that there will be staff time involved, but I don't know, are you anticipating staff is going to be stuffing the envelopes, or are you going to put that out to a vendor? I mean, I would...
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We would put that out to a vendor. Where the staff time really comes in is fielding calls and then with the mapping changes.
Okay, understood. And I think that, I'm not going to do it right now, but there are a number of things that I could point to myself, where we've spent $11,000, this administration has, that I think are kind of outrageous. So I'm not concerned about the $11,000 cost on this to give people notice about something happening to their property. The anonymous ad and the disinformation, Mr. Stringer, I understand the department's point of view on that. I would just say, I saw that ad. I posted that ad up on my Facebook page, and as a result of it, a number of people reached out and asked to opt out of the plan, and you all did honor that, and I appreciate that. So I think it's hard to argue that that's disinformation, because I think clearly there was an option to opt out. People did it, and they took that. So I think that's fair. One of the concerns that I have with this, and the reason I'm going to support this amendment, is because you are regulating private property, and I think that people should get notice of that. And I think that what you're seeing with the amendments that this council has passed is that there are a lot of folks who are property owners who don't trust that there's not going to be some kind of bait and switch from this administration, where you're creating this plan, and you're saying, this is the structure, but then down the road, you say, this is non-regulatory, non-regulatory, and then it becomes regulatory. So I think that's in large measure why we've seen some of the amendments that we've seen from the council so far, and why we continue to see these amendments. I think the last thing that I would point out is, I don't think that this is an innocuous amendment. So I appreciate the administration's opposition, because I think you're right. This is, this is onerous in terms of what you all have to do. And I think that really what it is, is an opportunity for people who missed the boat last summer to now come in and say, wait a minute, I want to be put in a special classification. I want to make sure you know what's going on, Office of Planning and Zoning. So I think that's really what's going on in the background. By the same token, I do support that. I think that they should have that opportunity to put you all on notice. So I, I'm going to support this amendment for those reasons. I appreciate all of your comments that you've shared. I know that it's more work for you, but I think it's work that's important for the taxpayers. So with that, that's where I'm going to wind up on this one.
Madam Chair, if I may, just one comment, very quickly.
Go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, you stated that there's some kind of bait and switch afoot. I don't know how many times we can say...
One more.
...that the plan is not regulatory, that any future regulatory actions would need to move through council.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to make a couple points of clarification, and why I don't support this amendment is the, the Green Infrastructure, the Greenway Plan that you, you reference, Mr. Volkey, has been altered because it also was not regulatory back in 2002. This plan came to this council at introduction noting in its document that it was not regulatory, which then we, as a council, I believe, as a 7-0 vote, strengthened the language, not only in the plan, clarifying and strengthening the non-regulatory language, and then also, by a 7-0 vote of this council, put into the code that this plan is not regulatory. And then you just said multiple times in your diatribe that this is a regulatory plan. This is sort of probably ridiculous conversation from here on out, but the last amendment that was similar to this one, I also opposed, because we just play, we just passed a general development plan that had multiple development policy map areas, that we have not notified each of those parcel owners, because again, they're just planning tools. So the stretch down Veterans Highway, all those business owners, they don't know unless they've read Plan 2040 that they are in a critical economic corridor. And I do think, once we set a precedent like this amendment could set, we are going to be asking Planning and Zoning to, and our long-term planners, to now potentially start doing this for all these non-regulatory plans. I think it's overkill. I think it actually sets a funny tone from this council, who I think has worked very well in a bipartisan fashion to balance economic growth, private property rights, and conservation. This sort of says conservation is at the bottom of our priorities. And it, it concerns me, and I think it should concern the people of, of our, of our county, that we can't move together on a non-regulatory plan that takes a snapshot in time and tells us where our trees are. I think it's time to just pass this Green Infrastructure Plan and move on to the remaining very important work of this council. Thank you.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to point out that Amendment Number Six, if this council adopts it, it will only be going into Section Seven of the bill. It will not become part of the code. It won't actually set any kind of formal legal precedent for future actions, and every future council would be evaluating, on the basis of what's in front of them, and their investigations, and their conversations, what they think is fair and wise to do. And in this particular case, given the process that occurred well before the bill came to us and where it stands now, I think it's wise to err on the side of giving people more notice. More notice is always better than less, and you can control the message. And so I'm not really so worried about any of the boogeymen that have been raised tonight.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feeler, District Five. So when I think back to the General Development Plan, when this council removed the then Greenways from the General Development Plan, a lot of the conversation revolved around no notification. These property owners don't know that they're part of the, the General Development, Development Plan and the Greenways, and the fact that the map was outdated. So here we are with a map that is to replace Greenways, and we have continued to have a conversation on the bill not being, it's, it's not going to change or affect. I mean, the whole reason that we are talking about this is because it's replacing something that was going to be regulated, and there is concern over regulation and lack of notification. We're having the same conversation that we had during the GDP. And I stand by my comments then, and I stand by them now, that when you're talking about private property, you have to give notification. And I don't think, I, I strongly agree with the opinion that conservation is at the bottom of priorities with this amendment. I think that this is a strong balance with conservation, but notification of private property owners for the reasons that I have stated. So thank you.
Would you like to make another comment, Ms. Pickard?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for a point of clarification, we removed the Greenways from becoming regulatory in the forest conservation law, not in the General Development Plan. So this council removed using the Greenways for all the reasons we've talked about in this bill from a, becoming a regulatory document. It wasn't the GDP. Thank you.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you for the clarification. I've got my plans a little mixed up.
All right. I'll just comment that I feel like, you know, the main purpose of this plan is more internal. You know, it's really to be used by Planning and Zoning, looking forward. And we're basically telling people who already know that they live in places with, you know, resources that might be targeted for conversation, not conversation, conservation. You know, it's basically telling people that already know, hey, you have a lot of trees on your property. Or, hey, you have a stream behind your property that, you know, is part of the watershed of such and such river. So I feel like they really already know, and this is, this document is for us, and it is, we have reiterated over and over again, is that redundant, to reiterate over and over again? We've reiterated that it is not regulatory. So I think, even though I, I definitely appreciate the spirit of notification, I don't really feel like there's anything we're notifying. People already know. They already know that they, you know, have a lot of trees in their yard. And, you know, other people who are concerned about conservation would probably like to keep them there. So I don't, I don't see that that is something that people wouldn't already know. And especially, it's internal, and it's not binding, as we've said. So I think that's where I'm coming down. Seeing no additional comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Six.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chaprowski.
Nay.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Six has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number Seven.
Amendment Number Seven. This amendment prohibits the 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan from being used by a county department, office, or agency in any decision-making.
Whoops. Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You may have the floor.
I'm actually going to withdraw the amendment at this point, and I'll probably come back at the next meeting with something else. So...
All right. Consider the amendment withdrawn. Moving on then, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight.
Amendment Number Eight. This amendment requires the Office of Planning and Zoning to submit an annual report on the progress of the implementation...
the progress of the implementation of the Green Infrastructure Master Plan, and as a part of the annual report, update the Green Infrastructure Network Map to reflect certain changes and additions.
All right, let's see. This is Ms. Pickard's amendment. You may have the floor, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment, as we discussed earlier with Amendment Five, is a reporting amendment. I would like to take full credit for its brilliance, but it really comes from Mr. Michael Stringer and Ms. Christina Pampa. I think in hearing some of the discussions of this council, I'm supposed to be brief. This amendment requires the Office of Planning and Zoning to submit an annual report on the progress of the implementation of Green Infrastructure Master Plan, and as a part of the annual report, update the Green Infrastructure Network Map to reflect certain changes and additions. Move to adopt.
Councilwoman Pusky, second.
All right. Is there any further questions from the council? And Mr. Barron, you may have the floor.
I'll be brief. We support.
All right. And I'll ask again, any additional questions from the council? All right. At this time then, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chapuski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eight is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number Seventeen dash twenty-two.
Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
This is an admin bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Joining me is Mr. Shagnovich. We have our OPZ team still in the House, Mr. Murphy from DPW, Mr. Herb from Health, and Ms. Kenny from Law. We discussed this at the previous meeting. Seventeen Twenty-Two approves amendments to the Water Sewer Master Plan for the future Two Rivers School Site. Property currently exists just outside of Public Sewer and Water Service. The bill marks the property for planned service and amends the service area boundaries appropriately. Our team here is happy to answer any questions, but just to remind this council, the inclusion in this plan is, Mr. Shagnovich will correct me if I'm wrong, a prerequisite to some state funding for school construction. So please pass this bill.
Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Pusky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've gotten a lot of emails on this that we didn't get to at last meeting. I know we have a lot of priorities that compete with each other, but for the 140% piney orchard school right now that's overcrowded, this is the solution, along with many other things that we're trying to work on. So I appreciate the administration and the school board trying to accelerate this, because there's a lot of issues in that corridor, we've talked about them for a while, and this is just one step to move that process. And I hope we continue to do other processes as well to help, but thank you so much.
Any other questions from the council? All right. At this time, you may recall that on March 7th, we started the public hearing, and we will continue the public hearing, because it was after midnight. So we will now continue the public hearing on Bill Number Seventeen dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number Seventeen dash twenty-two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And let's see, I'm sorry, let me turn the page here. Oh, we don't have anyone signed up for Seventeen dash twenty-two. If there is anyone who would like to come and speak, you would be welcome to come down to the table at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number Seventeen dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Seventeen dash twenty-two.
Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Any further discussion from my colleagues? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Seventeen dash twenty-two.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chapuski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number Seventeen Twenty-Two is passed.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Eighteen dash twenty-two.
Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Opioid Abatement Special Revenue Fund.
This is another administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another one we briefly discussed at the last meeting. I have our budget officer, Mr. Trumbauer, and our deputy county attorney, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. So Eighteen Twenty-Two establishes an opioid abatement special revenue fund to hold the county share of the national settlement with the drug dealers, also known as the opioid industry. The Maryland subdivisions could receive up to $337 million. That exact amount each jurisdiction receives depends on total participation in the settlement across the state. Mr. Trumbauer and the budget, from the budget office, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer are here for any questions. This bill does not appropriate any money. It gives us a place for when the settlement funds come, they have a place to land in a non-lapsing fund.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? So basically, we're just opening a bank account where we can put all the stuff?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Again, we opened the public hearing on this bill on March 7th, but because it was after midnight, we will now continue the public hearing on Bill Number Eighteen dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
And we will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number Eighteen dash twenty-two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We also had no one sign up ahead of time on this bill, but if there is anyone who wishes to speak before the council, you may come up to the table now and state your name and address for the record. I don't think that motion is coming towards the table. I'm checking, nope, it's into a chair. All right. So at this time, the public hearing on Bill Number Eighteen dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Eighteen dash twenty-two.
Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Opioid Abatement Special Revenue Fund.
Any further discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Eighteen dash twenty-two.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chapuski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Two is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two.
Bill Number Nineteen Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Aggregate Net Energy Metering Credit Purchase Agreement. Glenn Burney Landfill Solar LLC.
All right. This is another administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I've got Mr. Matt Johnston, our environmental policy director, our central services director, Ms. Anderson, our deputy county attorney, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer, and two gentlemen whose names I didn't write down, I'm sorry, we'll have you introduce yourselves in a second. As you know, we discussed this bill at the previous meeting. This is an exciting opportunity for the county. We have a landfill that we are going to put solar panels on. I'm going to let Mr. Johnston and the team give you more details, but over the top line on this, over the 25-year term of the agreement, county taxpayers are estimated to save over 2.8 million.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the council? All right. Again, you may recall that on March 7th, we opened the public hearing, but we will now continue it because it was after midnight. So Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Once again, we did not have anyone sign up to speak here in person, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two, you may come up to the table at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two.
Bill Number Nineteen Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Aggregate Net Energy Metering Credit Purchase Agreement. Glenn Burney Landfill Solar LLC.
All right. Ms. Hare, is that a question?
Yes.
You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I'm not sure who to direct this question at, and I tried to look it up myself, but I am trying to figure out the attachment C, I believe it is, with the credit price, essentially, that we would be paying for the solar electricity. How does that compare with the market rates? And same question for the 1.5% annual escalation, because I was, it's just not my area of expertise in trying to figure out where we fell in there. I was not doing a good job.
Turn it over.
Perfect.
Sure. So we actually had some help with that. We took our own analysis, looked at the current market price according to the information energy administration for the US, and we pulled that commercial price down to compare it. And then the auditor found that we had more cost savings than we expected. First time I've ever heard that. So thank you to the auditor. We went from $2.8 million, saved over that 25-year period, whenever you predict that price out into the future, compared to our PPA price. We went from that savings to the taxpayers to 3.675 million, because of an updated information from the IEA.
But that's for us purchasing electricity that's not solar, right?
That's correct.
I mean, how do the rates that we're paying for solar compare to market rates for solar?
That's a good question.
Okay.
Don, do you want to speak to, sorry, Don Ergo, our energy manager?
Don Ergo, Office Central Services, Energy Manager. The rates for this PPA are a little bit higher than the rates that we got for the Annapolis Solar PPA, which we did two and a half years ago, three years ago, but they're very close to current market rates in our area.
Okay. So I'm just trying to figure out, are we within, are we higher than market rates? Are we within the market rate? If we're close to Annapolis, are we, is there a reason why we're higher?
Well, they're slightly higher because there's more of a demand on going renewable. The renewable cap or goal that the county has to meet, that state set, is going, escalates every year.
Okay.
So everybody around us, there's more of a demand for solar, so, and then the solar prices for equipment and all of that has also escalated, again, because of the demand.
Okay. So it's within what the market is right now, is all I'm trying to figure? Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional questions at this time from my colleagues, this again was a public hearing that we held open for March 7th, so we will now continue the public hearing on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. Nothing was received ahead of time.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Once again, we had no one signed up in advance, but if there is anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two, now is the time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two.
Bill Number Nineteen Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Aggregate Net Energy Metering Credit Purchase Agreement. Glenn Burney Landfill Solar LLC.
And is there any further discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Nineteen dash twenty-two.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chapuski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Two is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number Twenty dash Twenty-Two.
Bill Number Twenty Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Legislative Branch Compensation Benefits.
This bill is Mr. Pusky's. Mr. Pusky, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the benefit of the public, because I think it was 12:30 at night when I read this, and we've had a work session, so it's been out for a while. The council appoints a salary commission, which then makes recommendations to the council on council benefit and salaries. For the record, a council cannot vote on their current salary, that's state law. And again, what is brought forward is a recommendation by that salary commission. I believe the vote was six-one from that citizen group. And again, I'm not going to repeat anything, what's in the bill is in the bill. I will not be here to benefit that, because my term ends in November, but for others, they may or may not. But again, this is a policy decision by the council, and I'd like to thank that salary commission for the work that they've done and the proposal they put forward. Thank you.
All right. Because this is a council bill strictly affecting the council, we do not have admin response here, but we do have Ms. Blair Klausmeyer if we have any questions, so thank you for being here. Are there any questions? From, I see Mr. Volkey's light. You may proceed, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Yeah, it was a six-to-one vote, Mr. Pusky, and the one against was the person that I appointed, so I will be following consistently with Mr. Griffiths, who voted against the salary increase, and I will be voting against this bill.
All right. At this, oh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I do appreciate the work that the commission did when they were discussing this issue. They were specifically looking at our salary and benefits, not the larger picture of the budget, so I'll be keeping that in mind with my vote this evening.
Any other comments? All right. Once again, we held the public hearing open on this bill from March 7th, so we will now continue the public hearing on Bill Number Twenty dash Twenty-Two. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We had one person submit testimony using the online testimony tool. It went to the entire council. It's been added to the record, and it is posted online.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number Twenty dash Twenty-Two. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Again, we had no one sign up in advance, but if there is anyone here who wishes to testify, you may come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number Twenty dash Twenty-Two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Twenty dash Twenty-Two.
Bill Number Twenty Twenty-Two. An Ordinance Concerning Legislative Branch Compensation Benefits.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any additional comments from my colleagues?
I just want to, I'm going to chime in here, because I want folks in the audience to know, we do not make salaries like the folks in Congress do. Our salaries are somewhere in the, you know, $40,000 range per year, and I think I fairly speak for all of my colleagues when I say this is a full-time job or very close to a full-time job. So I will be supporting this, because I really believe that we need to make this an opportunity, we need to make running for public office in the county accessible to everyone. You shouldn't have to be independently wealthy and, you know, sacrifice your education or whatever in order to be a public servant. And we really need people from all corners of the county, all backgrounds of the county, and that includes, in my opinion, all economic backgrounds of the county. So I will be supporting this. I will be supporting this bill. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you. I do that all the time. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief as well. I want to echo the sentiments of Madam Chair. I appreciate the work of the Charter Review Commission, or, I mean, the Salary, the Salary Commission.
Salary Commission. This is always a fun discussion to have as a council, but it is important to understand where Anarundel County also sits with regards to salaries, benefits, and staffing of our council compared to our other jurisdictions, surrounding jurisdictions, and we are incredibly lower paid. I will attest that this is definitely a full-time plus job if done really well, and the limitations of this bill, which I think were appropriate, was to ensure that if annual salaries of the other county employees did not, in a given budget year, did not increase to the, as much as, I'm going to get this wrong, but as much as the individual annual increases for the council, then the council's salary will increase only as much as the lowest bargaining unit salary increase. So, I think by the end of 2025, a county council member in Anarundel County, if this bill passes, will be $45,402. I think that's fine. I'm going to vote for this bill. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just make one point. I remember going to Fire Ops 101 when I was running as a candidate in 2018, and I remember the president of the fire union pulling me aside and telling me what a starting firefighter made. And at the time, the Anarundel County Council was slated to start making about, I think it was 38 or 40,000 a year, and a starting firefighter was making 39,000 in this county. And that, to me, wasn't right, and that's part of my problem with this, you know, us voting in these pay increases, is that we have people running into burning buildings, saving other people, and working shift work, 24 on 72 off, and they're out there doing that. And I don't disagree that this is a lot of work. This is a very full-time job if you do it right. I agree with that. And I think everybody up here works extremely hard, and I don't want to take that away from anybody. But I also think when you look at what we're paid and what we do versus what some of the other people in this county do and what they're paid, I just have a hard time giving us a pay increase when we're looking at that.
Ms. Pickard, go ahead.
Just for fun, I look forward to having this wage disparity conversation during the budget with Mr. Volkey when we look at all county employees.
Thank you for raising that, and I will say, I will say that I know that several members of this council have voted to increase our firefighters' salaries for the last three budgets, and I hope Mr. Volkey will join us when we do that again in this coming year and for all county employees who worked hard through the pandemic like I am sure every single person sitting in this room one way or another. So, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 20-22.
Madam Chair, before I call the roll, can I just let everyone know this stream has gone out for some reason, cable stream. Rundle TV guys are aware, they're trying to resolve it. I believe many people are trying to help at this point in time, but if you are receiving messages that the cable stream is out or the computer stream is out, it is.
I very much appreciate that, and actually, now that you mention it, I have a text message on my phone. I don't see anything. Okay. Anyway, thank you, Madam Secretary. It's still being recorded, so it should be available afterwards, even though it's ideal we want to be able to have people watch live, but we are still able to record, do you know?
I do not know the answer to that question. We are capturing the audio, that I do know. The technical difficulties that are happening right now, I'm not certain to what extent those are and how they will be resolved. But as soon as I have more information, I will share it.
Thank you very much, and I am at least encouraged to hear that we are still recording the audio, so some capture of this move, of this meeting will be, I almost called it a movie, this meeting will be available after the fact.
Correct, yes.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need to continue the public hearing before?
Oh, my goodness. Did I?
I think we skipped that part. Are you sure? No one came up?
It's a blur because I'm reading these same things over and over again. Did we have a public hearing on this bill?
You just have to close it. We have to do the, go through the round and close it and read the title one more time, that's all.
Okay, so, we'll continue the public hearing from March 7th. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
For some reason, I feel like I have said this already, but yes, we did receive one submission through the online testimony tool that went to the whole council.
Yes, now that you say that, it's a blur when we're doing these bills and we haven't had folks signed up. So, we just need to, and I asked folks to come down, the public testimony, no movement in the audience, last chance, I'll give one last call. And I think she's not coming our way, so I will just, no, she's not coming our way. All right, the public hearing is now closed on Bill Number 20-22. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 20-22.
Bill Number 20-22: An Ordinance Concerning Legislative Branch Compensation Benefits.
And thank you. I have noticed Ms. Schuett's light. I was not attempting to neglect you.
I just wanted to point out that my husband texted me ages ago to say that there was no audio when you were saying nice things about me. So, I hope that there are, there is an audio.
I can repeat it when the audio's back on.
Perfect. And I just got a message from my mom. I see you, audio and issue. Okay, so, that was the live update from the mom. Okay, so, at this point, I think we don't have any, we've discussed this as colleagues, so now, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 20-22.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
No.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 21-22 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And please, audience, I hope you forgive me, it does feel a little bit like Groundhog's Day, reading those same words over for each public hearing, so thank you for your patience. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 21-22.
Bill Number 21-22: An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning Cluster Development.
And Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said when I explained this piece of legislation in our work session and a little bit in our previous meeting, this was a bill that I worked on for a year and a half. It's a very large bill. It does a lot. Sometimes when you introduce a large bill, it gets out there to the general public, you start getting feedback and start weighing how legislation plays out. If passed, you realize a piece of legislation needs a little more work. So, I will be withdrawing the bill this evening. I do want to add, Ms. Schuett, you started working with me on this bill, knowing that tonight was your last night, and before I'd made the decision to withdraw, I thought, man, it's really going to stink that she doesn't get to see this through to the end. Well, you got to see this through to the end, so, thank you.
Wasn't the end we were hoping for, but, okay.
It's not. Don't be surprised if there's something else in the future, but I need to do a little more work on this one. Thank you.
All right, we will consider Bill 20-22 withdrawn. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 21, oh, no, that was, I'm sorry, Bill Number, we passed 20-22, 21-22 is withdrawn. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 22-22.
Bill Number 22-22: An Ordinance Concerning Hollywood on the Severn Special Community Benefit District.
This is another administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is Mr. Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. We discussed this one at the March 15th work session. 22-22 is the Hollywood on the Severn Improvement Association bill to form their SCBD. The stated purposes of the district are to maintain, acquire, construct, and improve community real and personal property, including waterfront areas and pier, to provide for administrative expenses incidental for carrying out those purposes, including insurance costs and repayment of any loan and interest. The association was able to obtain the 71% of votes in favor of forming the SCBD. Budget request for FY '23 has been submitted but is contingent upon the passing of the legislation creating the district. We have the team here to answer any questions. Hope you will support the bill tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any questions from the council? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 22-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, there was one submission received, did go to the entire council. It's been added to the record. It's included in the summary that's posted online.
Thank you very much. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 22-22. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If there is, oh, we didn't, I'm sorry, we did not have anyone signed up ahead of time, but if there is anyone here who wishes to testify, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. And once again, oh, nope, not for us. All right, seeing no movement toward the table in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 22-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 22-22.
Bill Number 22-22: An Ordinance Concerning Hollywood on the Severn Special Community Benefit District.
Any further discussion from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 22-22.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 22-22 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 24-22.
Bill Number 24-22, it's beginning to, it's a tongue twister at this point in time, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel and Public Ethics Positions in the Exempt Service.
All right, once again, this is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Rickers Atkinson from Personnel, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer sticking with me. As we discussed at the work session, 24-22 is the Position Control Bill related to the Police Accountability Board positions that are included in 1622. That is the Executive Director and the Administrative Secretary. The new Executive Director position would be in E7, and the Secretary, Administrative Secretary position is at grade E1. The administration respectfully requests the council hold this bill until you are completed, until you have completed your work on 1622.
With that said, is there a motion to hold the bill? Nope, not that. I need to have you read it into the record first. All right, thank you.
I think, actually, we should, you have to do the public hearing, and then you want to close that and then hold the vote.
All right. Okay, we'll move to the public hearing. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 24-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 24-22. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Once again, no one has signed up ahead of time, but if there is anyone here who wishes to testify on this bill, 24-22, you may come up to the table, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no motion in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 24-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 24-22.
Bill Number 24-22: An Ordinance Concerning Personnel and Public Ethics Positions in the Exempt Service.
Thank you, and at this time, I will ask if there is a motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 24-22 until April 4th.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 24-22 until April 4th.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 24-22 until the April 4th meeting has been adopted.
All right, we will have the vote on Bill Number 24-22 on April 4th. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 25-22.
Bill Number 25-22: An Ordinance Concerning General Provisions Language Access.
All right, this is another administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is our Human Relations Officer, Ms. Asha Smith, and Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law, stuck around for another bill. 25-22 is an important bill. This has been a priority of the administration since we came in. This bill requires the county to provide equal access to public services, meetings, websites, and webpages for individuals with limited English proficiency. The county already has the responsibility to provide many of the services outlined in the legislation under federal rules. The bill requires county agencies take reasonable steps to make materials available. This includes face-to-face, in-house oral language services if the agency has contact with individuals of limited English proficiency on a weekly basis or more often, or the translation of any vital documents ordinarily provided to the public into any language spoken by at least 3% of the county population as measured by the most recent census. In addition to those requirements, the bill requires county agencies to provide translations of public-facing webpages in any language spoken by more than a half a percent of the county population. This can be accomplished by existing computer translation tools. We ask that you will support the bill today, and I'll ask anyone at the table if you have any further comments.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any questions from the council? Seeing Mr. Volkey's light, you have the floor.
Thank you. Are you currently doing this now already?
So, a number of the services that would be required under this, we are, there are likely to be non-federal grant requirements, so there are county documents that are currently not translated. The county put $5,000 in each agency's budget to provide for some language service, so this is something we have been working on, but there will be some additional work for the county.
Okay, and I saw that in the fiscal note, that it says 5,000 per agency, so how many is that, what's the total number on this? What's the cost, if you know?
So, we, I don't think we know what the exact cost would, Madam Auditor might be able to tell you what that 5,000 times the number of agencies is. The, I will say, it's a little hard to predict because the last two years with COVID has required an increased use specifically in the Department of Health and some of our Health and Human Services agencies.
And just to follow up, what, thank you, Madam Chair, what in this bill is not already required by federal law? You said most, you didn't say most, you said much of this is already covered by federal law. What is it that you're adding that's in addition to federal law?
The lawyers might be able to give you a clear answer. The way I understand it is if there is a grant, we have to do it. Hey, look at that, they're nodding yes.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it might seem minor to some people, but I appreciate the administration doing this. I remember several years ago, in our school system, we had immigrant families or folks who moved here from other countries had trouble accessing the school system, so county government should be the same. And I think if we can spend $11,000 on a mailing about private property, we should be investing money for our folks who are immigrants and new to our county, so thank you.
All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 25-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 25-22. Remarks will be limited to two minutes, and I actually have three names for this bill. So, Kirsten Clark, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing anyone's name incorrectly, Tara Or Tara Kim, and Connor Curran. You may come down to the table, state your name and address for the record. Clark, when you are ready, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. Good evening, County Council members. My name is Kirsten Clark. I am Executive Director of the Center of Help located at 1906 Forest Drive in Annapolis in District 6. This evening, I'm testifying in support of Bill 25-22 for language access to public services, including websites and meetings for individuals with limited English proficiency. The mission of the Center of Help is to empower, educate, and connect immigrants with resources to promote self-sufficiency and to advocate for the successful integration of the immigrant community into Anarundel County and the surrounding areas. This is the first step. We have a long way to go to meet the needs of the immigrant community in our county, but it's time for public meetings to set the example for our county agencies as well as other organizations throughout the county. Not passing this bill would mean purposely discriminating against people due to their language. All county residents deserve to participate in local government as well as receive services. I am here this evening and testifying on behalf of this bill because the clients of the Center of Help do not have access to do so. We have to hear their voices, and we cannot do so without language access, and they cannot access services in many areas. It has fallen upon the Center of Help to do interpretation on behalf of the county for more than 20 years. The population has grown exponentially, and it's become more and more difficult to do so. In Annapolis, Hispanic residents account for more than 1/4 of the population now, as of the 2020 census. We serve over 2,500 families per year, most of which could otherwise be served by our local county agencies if there was language access. We are liaison, but the Center of Help staff is not certified interpreters, and we need the county to provide those interpretations. We continue to be approached, and we are not paid for our efforts, and it's just not enough, so I really encourage you to vote yes for this bill.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clark. Ms. Kim, you have the floor. Ms. Kim, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chairwoman Radvian, Vice Chair Pruski, and members of the council. My name is Tara Kim. I'm a student at Chesapeake High School in Pasadena, Maryland. Hearing my last name, it might ring a bell to you that I'm of Korean descent. It's the language I grew up hearing and the language I still speak today. My mother immigrated to this country a little over 20 years ago. She came to this country seeking opportunities for her children, not for herself. But my mom can't speak English very well. She raised two children, helped me with schoolwork, sought out her own opportunities, and set up a future for her kids while not speaking the language of this country. I spent countless hours sitting on the phone for her, filing out her taxes, writing her papers, translating everything from bank calls to ordering pizza. It might be why I raise my voice so much to this day. I spent so much time on the phone complaining. While I'm a big talker, my mom is quite the listener. However, the difference is, she doesn't have a choice. She cannot speak, and as a result, she can do nothing but listen. However, county business is not the common English you hear every day. Even while speaking this language for about 17 years of my life, I still have to reread things over and over and over again. This bill will allow someone to talk to her, for her to get involved in what her daughter sees in the county she grew up in. And maybe someday, she'll soon be able to become a speaker. I do not want to speak only of my own cases, but the many thousands of non-English speakers who reside in Anarano County. My family is fortunate enough to have a kid like me who can navigate translators and even afford to purchase them. There are too many who reside in our county that do not have those said privileges. The best place for all means all, and that includes those who made the selfless sacrifice to come to this county to seek better opportunities for their loved ones.
Thank you very much. Mr. Curran.
Good evening, Chairwoman Radvian, Vice Chair Pruski, and members of the council. For the record, Connor Curran, District 3. I encourage the council to vote yes on Bill 2522. As someone who has taken the time to learn a second language, I understand how critical language interpretation can be for some people. They have every right to access the functions that our county agencies provide daily. The ability to communicate to those who are supposed to serve you can make or break your ability to get help. This is absolutely inappropriate use of our tax dollars. County government should work for all its citizens, no matter their primary language spoken. According to the United States Census Bureau, 11.7% of Anarano County residents speak another language. We would be doing a disservice to up to 63,000 people if we don't provide more language access. This legislation will require a limited English proficient population of 3% of a language spoken, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, or that a county agency regularly serves to be required to provide equal access to their functions. I believe that this is essential to county business. I understand the limited access that we may have to interpreters of language, but I believe that we will come together as a community in order to provide equal access to county functions. If we want to continue to make Anarano County the best place for all, this council needs to pass Bill 2522. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. If there is anyone else here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no motion in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number 25-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 25-22.
Bill number 2522, An Ordnance Concerning General Provisions Language Access.
All right, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Auditor, can you clarify what the fiscal cost is of this bill? Because I'm looking at your blue letter, and I don't see in there where it talks about taking sort of the math that the fiscal note from the Budget Office had and extrapolating it by county agencies. So I think that should be a pretty simple math equation of five grand times however many agencies there are, but I don't know how many agencies there are, so I thought maybe you might.
Sure. Michelle Belair, County Auditor. It was, while the information was put in the budget as a placeholder for the $5,000, it was difficult to get information by department of what is anticipated to be spent, which is why we put the total expenditures over the past two years in the blue letter as those amounts, because they weren't able to give what those uses of the $5,000 would be, and they were merely placeholders within the budget.
Can I follow up?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So then I guess the question I would have is, if we know how many county agencies there are, we multiply that by 5,000, does that come in close to what they're spending or have spent in the last two years? That seems like a way to be able to double-check that.
Well, the amounts that were spent in the past two years, it was for fiscal year '21, was $765,980 on translation and interpreter services, because there are amounts that are, well, you'd imagine, amounts that are already included, but there was a large increase in those expenditures because of COVID-related programs.
Sure.
And those totals include general fund expenditures and various grant-related expenditures. FY '22, year-to-date, is $272,600. And based on the information provided to us, the $5,000 placeholder was not in every department, so it would be fewer than the number of agencies. I believe we saw it in our review of the budget in maybe 10 to 20 of them, but that's just an estimate. We didn't look into where the placeholders were because there couldn't be details provided of the anticipated expenditures.
Okay, I'll come back.
I believe Ms. Fiedler was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So, reading the fiscal note, it seems as though the cost would be dependent on requests for services. So can I assume then the request could be zero, or the request could be 10, or, I mean, we just don't know? So...
Yeah, and I think Pete Barron with the administration, and I think Madam Auditors made a good point. COVID does throw off a little bit what the quote-unquote "normal" year expenses would be. The administration is committed to doing this. We believe it's the right thing to do. I think we will have to see a little bit if there is, there are a number of agencies, particularly in the Health and Human Service side of the county, that regularly have stuff translated. There are other agencies that might have a public-facing component, but typically just do English. So that will be what we'll find out. I mean, I think the administration budgeted costs for additional services, and maybe Ms. Smith can talk a little bit more about that 5,000. But the idea here is if a language is spoken at 3%, we should be providing those county documents in that language.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
So, piggybacking on that and understanding that we're already doing a lot of the work, do you know or can you identify the gaps, or is that just because it's going to be on request?
I'm going to turn it over to the expert.
Sorry. Sorry about that. I think one of the issues that it's important to clarify is that we do have standing obligations under federal and state law. And so, the complication and the reason why this bill is important is that it's really spread out, right? We have two federal statutes and a federal executive order, and then there's a state law. And so, in terms of ensuring that we're complying with those laws, one of the issues is sort of administrative efficiency, right? We kind of need it all to be in one place so that our department heads know what to do, so that as a compliance person, I can point to something and say, these are all of the requirements sort of codified. We are spending money, just in terms of the expenditures in that $5,000. The $5,000 was really intended to ensure that any departments that were not already doing what should be done under state and federal law, and of course, we believe that everyone does what they're supposed to do under state and federal law. But in case there were some departments that had not been as attentive in the past to language access issues, that they would have enough money to begin to secure translators for their vital documents, make sure that any documents that they have that are providing direct benefits to the public or are applications for direct benefits, that those things are translated. It was really sort of a catch-up, right? If you haven't done it, this is what you need to do. And I think COVID really highlighted the need for us to do that. As everyone's alluded to already, the Health Department had a big increase in what they had to do to make sure that messaging was getting out to folks in appropriate languages. And so, I think the administration was just really focused on making sure that all departments had access, that the budget was not going to be the reason why people did not take care of this, especially during COVID, while people were potentially at home and having to do business in a very different way. So moving forward, yes, lots of departments were already spending money. We know that the Police Department interfaces with folks and reported using translators and interpreters almost on a daily basis. A lot of our public-facing, large departments have already been doing that because they have to. But it's hard to predict, looking over the last couple of years, what the future expenditure is going to look like. We don't anticipate a significant increase. You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Hare, I believe you are next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I think, ma'am, you just hit it for me. I mean, the $765 that we see here from 2021, that was going to be expended anyways. This bill didn't exist, and that money was spent regardless. And if it was $765 this year without this bill, it was spent regardless under federal law. We have to have them in courts and hospitals and all sorts, right? The translators are, as you said, mandated. So we're just talking about the incremental increase for, I don't know, maybe Planning and Zoning doesn't have a particular document that's translated or something like that.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I support this bill, and I understand the federal and state legal obligations, but I'd like to understand two things. One, is the county currently under, or have we been under threat of a legal action in order to come into compliance with any of those laws? Is this bill in any way, you know, related to that or the potential of that?
Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And my second concern goes to any possible legal ramifications, because in section, well, on page 2 of the bill, toward the bottom, paragraph D, "Implementation," the provisions of this section shall be fully implemented by July 1st, 2022, but we're not going to pass a budget until June 14th or something around that area. So, is there time between the time that we'll have passed a budget and presumably we'll have some better idea of the numbers to fully implement this bill by then?
We're confident that we will be able to accomplish the bill.
You're willing to provide some backup to Madam Auditor on that? I mean, I'm just saying, if maybe you need more time, that that might be an amendment we should consider. As I said, I support the bill, but I think you should be careful about that.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the record, I support this bill, but I really wanted to take a moment to thank our panelists that came to speak from, that are sitting in the audience. I think you represent the younger generation that just gets it. So thank you for coming out. This isn't the first time we've seen you in the last few months, and keep coming back and using that voice.
All right. I'm just going to jump in here. I support this bill very much. I think it's actually a misunderstanding, a common misunderstanding, that English is the official language of the United States. The United States has no official language. English is the most common language spoken in the United States, but obviously, we are a country of many languages, and therefore, our government should be accessible regardless of what language a person speaks. And that is also true of the state of Maryland. We have no official language in the state of Maryland. I want to just, I actually used to be an ESOL teacher, which then was an ELL teacher, which is a teacher who works with young people who are English language learners, who are learning English as a second language, as they used to say. But I just want folks to have an understanding of what the ramifications are of not having these services available. Think about the most serious conversation that you could have, for example, with your doctor, and you don't speak the same language as your doctor, and the only person available to translate between you and your doctor is your, say, eight-year-old child who knows a little bit of the language you speak and the language that the doctor speaks. They may not have the vocabulary for, you know, putting that kind of pressure on a child, which actually is quite frequent in these situations, has a real impact on young people that are working very hard to, you know, be a good member of their families in, you know, in situations where there are undoubtedly already pretty big seismic changes going on, if you imagine moving from another country in whatever circumstances that may be, as a refugee, as a willing and free person who could have stayed in their home country but came to the United States for whatever reason. But I just think that having these services available is so important because every person deserves to have access to their government, and we need to dismiss the notion that English is like the official language, because it is not, and it has never been the official language. We have had people of various language backgrounds from all parts of the United States for a very long time, and this really honors it, and I'm grateful to see the county executive bring this forward for our county and every citizen, regardless of their language background in Anarano County.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So again, I'm going to ask this question that I sort of started with. If federal law already requires certain things, and we're doing them because it's a contingency of getting those federal funds, we have to do it. And if there are grant funds that require that we do this already, what is it that this is doing that isn't already either being done or that can be done by way of a policy? Because the executive obviously oversees the entire county government, basically. I mean, but for the legislative branch, the county exec oversees everything, so whether that's an internal policy, whether it's an executive order, whatever it may be, what's the need for the legislation when the county executive controls all of that? I guess I'm not quite clear on what this is going to do that's incrementally different from what we're already doing, as Ms. Hare pointed out, or what the county executive already has authority to do. So maybe some clarification there would help.
I think I'm going to ask Ms. Smith to talk a little bit about the work that she's been doing, because you're correct. County Executive Pittman has made language access an important priority of this administration. This bill is the next step in that work, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith to talk a little bit about all the great work that she and her folks have been doing.
So I think in talking about the great work that me and my folks have been doing, which would be me and my folk, there's one. I think it's important to know that just going through the landscape, the legal landscape for language access, is not an easy thing. And if every time we have an issue, every director of every department or the person who's confronting the issue is required to go to some statute to determine, one, if they're covered, right? Because there are sort of some nuances. You have to be receiving federal funding for a particular program, and parsing all of that out is complicated, and I don't think that it's a good use of anybody's time to do that. But to answer the other part of this question, there's the issue of continuity. Language access, these are not laws and executive orders that are going away. And so, to, you know, put it in an executive order that's good for a period of time, just does not seem to be the way to deal with something of this magnitude, especially when it's onerous, it's difficult for people to read. I can tell you that for the departments that may not be complying as closely as they should, it's not because they don't want to. We have really hard-working people in this county and people who are serious about making sure residents get the services that they are entitled to here. But the issue is that it's difficult, and people don't know exactly what to do. And so, to the extent that my role is to oversee compliance with these types of laws, it is my recommendation that it's in our best interest to codify it in a statute.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Okay, so what I'm hearing is that while you could do this by way of an executive order or a policy, in order to ensure longevity beyond this administration and to make this the new county policy, ongoing, this is the law of the land, that's why you're bringing this down. It's not that you can't do it currently, and it's not that you're not doing it in large measure already. It's a continuity issue to ensure from here forward, this is kind of known as, this is what has to happen, so that if the administration changes and somebody else comes in and they wouldn't want to do this, they're bound by it because it's county code, and for it to change, it would have to come back through this body. Is that kind of what I'm reading between the lines, hearing you say?
In part, but not exactly, because part of it is that it's an administrative burden to be thinking every few years about, you know, compliance is something that you should be doing consistently and sort of the same way over time unless there's a reason to do things differently. When you're doing training, when you're referring people to materials, it doesn't really make sense to have, for something like this where the compliance is required anyway, to have people sort of piecemealing things and looking at things again and again every few years. My recommendation is for, and you're an attorney, administrative efficiency is something that we learn about. For administrative efficiency, it makes sense. I don't have a better answer than that, unfortunately.
Can I follow up?
You may follow up.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and I understand that. I guess what I'm thinking is, if this administration comes in and tells every department, the policy of this administration is that we will have language access for everyone across the board, once the department's done the work of creating whatever forms they have to create and doing the translation services and getting all that up and running, it seems like it's a self, sort of perpetuating cycle that's going to keep going down the road because you've already done the hard work, and the hard work is to do it initially. At that point, it's sort of just continuing the work that you've already done. So I get your point about, you know, certainly looking at that and saying it's administrative burden, but it sounds like the administrative burden is now, and it sounds like you've already done that by virtue of what this administration has done in terms of your... done that by virtue of what this administration has done in terms of your progress to make sure that this is something that's a priority for you. So I, that's where I'm trying to understand this bill and exactly what it does differently than what you're obligated to do or already doing.
I'm sure you can appreciate that cases and controversies arise no matter how long something's been in effect, and for, again, for a department head to have to look and consider, you know, let me go to the federal statute. What does it say? It says that if I'm receiving federal funding for this program, then I have to do this. Who's the 5% of the population? What do they speak? Let me go to the census to figure it out. It really just doesn't make, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I understand what you're saying, but I think like all compliance, Title, Title VII was passed in 1964, and we have laws prohibiting discrimination at a local level, and it promotes continuity. You kind of have to just do it over time.
One last question.
You may proceed.
Thank you. So is this legislation that we see now, is this currently a policy that's in effect? Has the county executive put this in effect as a policy across the county?
We have made, making language access available a priority. Every little piece of this bill, I don't, I don't think so. I think what we have done is worked to make the county more accessible, county services more accessible, all the things that Ms. Smith talked about. This bill is the next step. I think you should pass the bill tonight.
We did a countywide language access, oh, can I go?
No, good, no.
I'm sorry. We did a countywide language access orientation in January for all of the departments. We've required all departments to designate language access liaisons for the purpose of making sure that everybody knows who the county vendors are and what to do. We've provided them with a startup kit of materials that they can use to ensure that people who visit their premises can identify the language that they speak. So we've been doing a lot of things in that regard.
Thank you very much. Seeing no additional lights from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 25-22.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill number 25-22 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill number 26-22.
Bill number 26-22, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Weeds, and Vegetation.
Let's see, this is an administration bill with Ms. Pickard as a cosponsor, but Mr. Barron, you may have the floor to begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got joining me from DPW, Mr. Bakie and Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law. 26-22 removes parcels owned by community association from the list of exemptions to the county's prohibition of noxious weeds. It also adds stormwater management ponds or devices into the list of exemptions. Representatives are here to answer any questions. By way of background, this bill came to us through constituent complaints around community associations not upkeeping their property, and we took the opportunity to also update the language as it relates to stormwater control devices because they are regulated in another part of the code. Hope that you'll pass the bill and add that the experts are here if you need anything.
Thank you. And Ms. Pickard, as a cosponsor, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Just please pass the bill.
All right, we'll take it. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number 26-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
Thank you very much. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill number 26-22. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Once again, we had no one signed up in advance, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may please come down to the table and state your name and address for the record. Oh, and I see we have someone coming to testify. Come, you may have a seat, Mr. Jason.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes, whenever you are ready. Actually, let's make sure your microphone is on.
Testing.
She's, there you go.
John Jason, Pasadena, Maryland. In general, I'm in favor of 13-6, including stormwater management. If Mr. Volkey was here, he'd already be rolling his eyes about how many times we've talked about that. Somebody else here may be internally rolling their eyes about how many times we've talked about that. However, in general, when it comes to 13-6, weed control and noxious plants, the entire section is flawed. 13-6-101 defines noxious weeds and ranked vegetation, which is out of variance with proper management of native plants. The entire section is out of variance with Maryland law, particularly HB 322, which was passed last year, if I recall, empowering people in limited circumstances to have native plants. It offers no protection for anybody who is attempting to make a pollinator garden, a rain garden, some sort of, you know, abatement of erosion in their yard or anything else like that if they have a small plot, like most people in Anaronda County do. 13-6 is, in modern management, so horribly flawed, I believe that the only thing left to do to it is subject 13-6 to Section 104, appropriate means of destruction, and start over again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. If there is anyone else who wishes to testify, you may come down at this time. All right. Seeing no additional movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number 26-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 26-22.
Bill number 26-22, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Weeds, and Vegetation.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Jason, for your, for your comments, which I heartily agree. I think we just need to do a separate bill to address those issues, so I will still be supporting this bill tonight.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, district, Hare, District 7. I guess I have a practical question. If there's a violation, is it the HOA that's getting in trouble or the homeowner that's getting in trouble since beforehand, the HOA community was exempted out? But now the community association is subject to it. How are we tackling that violation?
Good evening, Councilwoman Hare, Alex Bakie, Deputy Director, Bureau of Highways. To clarify, the violation would be against the property owner. So in the cases where there is community-held property that is in violation of the code, then they would be the one subject to the enforcement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Mr. Bakie, I don't know if you know the answer to this. It might be a Ms. Kenny question as well, but I understand the impetus for this is somewhere in my district where there's a problem. Homeowners Association has not been turned over to the people who live there. The developer still holds that, and so there's sort of this loophole because the county isn't able to do anything about it because of this exemption. I just want to make sure that this will allow you, the enforcement tool, to go after pieces of, I don't even want to call them property, they're just itty-bitty little parcels or something that are left in a community that the developer is still holding back, but that maybe they're not taking care of. So will this cover that for you from a DPW standpoint or law?
Alex Bakie, Deputy Director, Bureau of Highways. Thank you, Councilman Volkey, for that question. I might have to defer to Ms. Kenny on that, but my understanding, again, is it will give us the enforcement tools that we need in general to go after property owners that don't comply.
I'd like to ask one question, anyone who can answer this. Do you have a way to distinguish between sort of noxious weeds and, you know, pollinator garden, which might in some ways resemble noxious weeds if, you know, to the untrained eye? I just know this from personal experience where, you know, there was a, a community had built a rain garden, for example, and then the untrained eye thought, oh, that's long grass that should be mowed, and they ended up mowing a pollinator garden. Is there a way from a legal perspective to distinguish, or how do you, how do you deal with that?
Councilwoman and Chairwoman Radvian, Alex Bakie, Deputy Director, Bureau of Highways. It is possible for us to reach out internally within the county to folks who are more aware of that, certainly Recreation Parks has a subject matter experts, but in general, we have experience knowing that we might have a wild meadow that is not a weeded lot, and so that wouldn't be applicable to enforcement action. So we're able to apply some, some good engineering judgment in my world in terms of what constitutes a weeded lot or not, but we also have internal resources I can reach out to for additional guidance.
Okay, so you do have some methods of distinguishing one from the other?
We do have some methods to do that. And, and if I get into a pickle, then I reach out to Office of Law, and they often are able to steer us in the right direction.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I don't know if the impetus for this bill was in any one particular district. I just want to know if it would apply in a certain scenario, a scenario that I've heard from in District 5. So you have a community where the property owner in the, in the home is required to be by county code standards and zoning, but there is a, an abutting property that is owned by the HOA that is not maintained. There are vines, ivy, that are encroaching onto the private property. It's on fences and et cetera, and the private property homeowner does not have the authority to go on that property. It's not their property. It's owned by the HOA. The HOA says, well, we're not required to do anything with it. If this bill passes, would you then be authorized to enforce on that property, the HOA property?
Councilwoman Fiedler, thank you for that. Alex Bakie, Bureau of Highways. The general answer is yes. We would, given this tool, be able to enforce against the homeowners association. In this case, if I understand your, your question properly, the abutting adjacent property owner would lodge a complaint with DPW. We would do our, our normal code-prescribed investigation and formal notice to the property owner, in this case, the HOA. If they didn't ultimately comply after given time periods as specified, we would then take enforcement action.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Seeing no additional questions from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 26-22.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 26-22 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill number 16-22 as amended.
Bill number 16-22, An Ordnance Concerning Police Accountability Board.
Thank you. This is an administration bill, so Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of folks here with me. Just really, very quickly, because I know there are a number of folks waiting to testify publicly, for the purposes of the administration's comments at the front of this, I know we have a number of amendments to discuss, and, and we look forward to doing that. We also look forward to, to hearing the testimony that'll be coming up. Just as a reminder, this was discussed in the work session and at the March 7th meeting. The General Assembly passed state law. We need to implement that law. The state laid out specific procedures and responsibilities for the board and tasked counties with establishing the board's membership structure, et cetera. 16-22 works within that framework. We know there were a number of amendments that were accepted at the previous meeting. They make the bill better. There will be a number of amendments that we discuss tonight. Some we will have concerns with, some we will be supportive. We appreciate the dialogue that the council has engaged in, and we know we have work ahead of us. This is an extremely important task before us. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you have or just move to public hearing. It's up to the council.
I'll give my colleagues an opportunity to ask questions or chime in before we start the public hearing, is there? But I see no red lights. All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 16-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive, I think it was about 10 submissions ahead of time that all went to the council, have been posted to the website and added to the record.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. We will, oh, pardon me, we will now invite members of the public, members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill number 16-22 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes, and I do have a number of names, so I will call down folks in groups of six at a time, and I'm going to say it wrong again, Ms. Clark, Kirsten, Kirsten Clark, Nikki Owens, Linda Davis, Toni Strong Pratt, Nicole Dial, and Linda Gerdner. And Ms. Clark, when you are ready, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Again, my name is Kirsten Clark. I am here representing the Center of Help located at 1906 Forest Drive in Annapolis in District 6. The state of Maryland does not report any data regarding Latinos as a ethnic community in the criminal justice system, and this includes arrests. It is impossible to even know how the system is truly affecting the Latino community. In May 2021, Latinos Unidos reported this vast undercounting of people of color in deaths caused by police, but despite undercounting, the people of color still constitute less than 40% of the US population and more than 60% of all people killed by or who died in the custody of police. Latinos are more likely than whites to face police discrimination while driving and are more likely to be subject to stop and search than their white counterparts. This also means that a black person in a vehicle is more than four times as likely to be searched by police than a white person, and a Latino person is three times as likely, despite the fact that whites are more likely to be found with drugs, weapons, or other contraband upon the search. Outreach programs, our Hispanic liaisons and efforts by the police are fantastic, and the Center of Help celebrates them and works alongside our both county and Annapolis City police liaisons for the Hispanic community, but it's not enough to overcome the fear and the reality of how policing is affecting our immigrant neighborhoods. We need accountability to assure that our immigrant families are protected. We have youth who are being recruited by gangs who work with the Center of Help. They have so much fear because they have seen their friends be mistreated, and despite working with liaisons, sometimes they go back and work with officers and they decide not to collaborate with police because of how those interactions are going. So I, the Center of Help is part of the police accountability.
Ms. Clark, I need you to conclude your remarks.
Coalition, and we urge you to continue to work with the coalition to amend the bill for the coalition's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Davis?
Yes, hi. My name is Linda Davis. I live at 215 Coronet Drive. I oppose Bill 16-22 unless it is amended with recommendations of the Anaronda County Coalition for Police Accountability. We shall not be moved. I found myself thinking about this song after the county council meeting on March 7th. We shall not be moved. This is what I thought, this is what I thought five of the seven county council members and several members of the audience, including the administration, were saying after hearing the heart-wrenching and heartbreaking stories about police misconduct from one person of color after another. Your faces and your words showed that you were not moved by these stories. Of course, this song is not about this. It is about people in protest movements not being moved from our literal and figurative positions for justice and equity for all people. I recommend that you listen to Mavis Staples singing the song, "We Shall Not Be Moved." She talks about the police being called while she's at a restaurant. I hope her story and the song move you to do the right thing regarding this bill. Maybe stories of money will move you. After all, money talks. I know at least one of you cares so much about money, you were willing to vote against Juneteenth being a holiday. A March 9, 2022 article entitled "The Hidden Billion Dollar Cost of Repeated Misconduct" stated that more than $1.5 billion has been spent to settle claims of police misconduct involving thousands of officers repeatedly accused of wrongdoing. I provided this to the link in my written testimony. I wonder how much money this county spends on police misconduct. If the taxpayers in the county council knew how much money was spent on police misconduct, would they be moved to support the Police Accountability Board? Lastly, one county council person asked for space after their car was stopped for less than 30 seconds. than 30 seconds by people protesting for a strong and effective Police Accountability Board. Would this person be moved to support an effective Police Accountability Board if they realized how often people of color get stopped by police for driving while black and how they never get space to breathe? If this does not move you, I don't know what will.
Amen. I'm Dr. Linda Gerdner. I live at 941 Fall Ridge Way, Danbrell, Maryland 21054. I'm a resident of District 4. I oppose Bill 1622 unless amended with the coalition's recommendations. Years ago, I taught police officers at the American University School of Justice in D.C. I knew many fine individuals who were an asset to the force and the communities they served to protect. There were also a couple of officers whose beliefs and behavior posed a great threat to the safety of the people where they served. When I was lecturing about socialization, one police officer, who was a Vietnam War veteran, asked me what to say to his son when the boy asked what it was like to kill someone. I have to give a trigger warning here. He told me that he had a photo on the mantle of him, quote, "blowing away a gook," end of quote. He added further, and I quote, "It was better than an orgasm." Thankfully, other officers, including other veterans, erupted in disagreement. Knowing that this man patrolled communities of color has haunted me. I understand that some of you felt that the coalition's recommendations, quote, "would disrespect the sacrifices police make," end of quote. Democracy works best when we have built-in guardrails that support the rule of law. These safeguards increase accountability in relation to, for example, elected officials. Remember the former county executive, John Leopold, who was indicted for misconduct? I doubt if you believe such guardrails imply that you are all disrespected. Why then think that guardrails mean that for police? The community can help strengthen and support the ethical and honorable behavior of most police officers by having a strong and empowered Police Accountability Board that can investigate the alleged misconduct of a few. Finally, the PAB needs to be fully funded and staffed so that it can be equipped to carry out all its functions, so please pass a robust, well-funded PAB that includes all of the coalition's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gerdner. I'm going to have to ask the audience to refrain from applause just to keep the decorum in our chambers. Next, our next speaker is Nikki Owens.
Yes.
You may have the floor. Two minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Nikki Owens. I live in Fredericksburg, Virginia. My cousin is William Green. William Green was murdered. He was handcuffed in the front seat of a police car. The officer fired seven times at him point-blank. He was not a criminal. He was not committing a crime. He was in a traffic accident, and he was murdered. We watch television and we watch movies that hail policemen as heroes out here while we're sleeping, arresting criminals and keeping us safe. When we watch on television every day, on the news, we're seeing that they are terrorizing us throughout the communities, throughout Black communities, people of color, daily. We're seeing this on the news. We know that policing in America is broken, yet no one's willing to do anything about it. And for me, as a Black woman with a son, I feel like if I was a white woman crying because a cop shot my cousin like that, I would get more sympathy. If white people were dying in the street the way we were, if a white person was killed the way my cousin was killed, it would have been national news. It would have been a travesty. There would have been people marching. But it wasn't. It was William Green, an average, everyday guy. He wasn't a criminal, didn't have a criminal record, and no one cared. There's people in PG County where he lives, where he was murdered, who doesn't even know his name. There needs to be police accountability. I understand that policemen, they're out there to do a job, but we hold them at such low standards. We hold them at less standards than we hold the people that they are arresting. So we need to hold them at a higher standard than the people that they are arresting. It's unfair that they can go fire six, seven shots into a person without any disregard. That man did not hesitate. He was very comfortable doing it, and my cousin was not the first person that he murdered in 10 years.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. This panel is dismissed. I will call down the next six speakers. Armani Jackson, Jen Roman, Randy Williams, Tiara Hawkes, Reverend Marguerite Morris, and Amy Cruz. When you come down, we'll go in that order. Please state your name and address for the record, and you each have two minutes. Ms. Jackson.
Hello, council members.
Let's make sure your microphone is on so we can all hear you. Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Armani Jackson. My address is in Glenburnee 21061 under District 1. I oppose Bill 1622 unless it is amended with our recommendations. As a young resident of Anaronda County, I'm highly dissatisfied and disgusted with how my county council members have displayed their character, especially today with how you've deliberately tried to draw out the meeting when you know we're trying to testify on this bill, when the other builders, when the other bills didn't have anybody to testify on. Well, luckily, I'm still wide awake to speak my mind for this, for those who have left. But first, I would like to call out every single one of you, besides Ms. Radvian and Ms. Lacy, who are the ones who have actively tried to listen to us on some degree on Bill 1622 to be amended with the coalition's recommendations. My question for each of you is, how can you sit and ignore your constituents that are literally begging you to pass a bill that could save lives and uphold justice when it is literally your job to listen to what we have to say? Why did you run for office if you're not going to do the job right? What we're asking for is quite simple. Stop amending the bills, stop amending the bill with your political ambitions and take the recommendations that the community wants in the bill. What is stopping you? It seems to me like you got the law enforcement's hand up your back to make you look like a puppet for their agenda. As I finish to speak, I will not sweeten my delivery on this testimony to make you feel more comfortable or complacent than what you already are. What I truly hope you ponder on is the consequences after you make your final decisions on Bill 1622, because if you choose not to amend the bill with the coalition's recommendations, just know that your names will be frowned upon by many who hear that you decide to take a vote against humanity. And to even a more extreme measure, there will be blood on your hands because police will continue to do whatever they want since you're giving them the green light. And if you think we will want you to serve us again in the near future, you better think again, because what makes you think you should get a pay increase for this said full-time job or get re-elected or run for another position if you can't even do what we ask? Pass the bill with our recommendations or your political career will likely suffer. Thank you.
Ms. Roman.
My name's Jen Roman. I live on 847 Harvest Drive in Odington, Maryland. I oppose Bill 1622 unless it is amended to include the Anaronda County Coalition for Police Accountability's recommendations. I especially urge you to approve Amendment Number 43, which gives investigatory powers to the Police Accountability Board. I support both police officers and stronger police oversight. These two things are not mutually exclusive. My best friend's husband is a wonderful Anaronda County police officer, who I know has saved many lives and cares deeply for the community he serves. But I also know that not everyone is cut out for this line of work. Carrying a gun that could potentially be used against another human being when an officer feels threatened is a serious responsibility. Having the authority to arrest someone, which can completely disrupt their life, is a serious responsibility. We must take police misconduct complaints seriously and investigate them fairly, which means giving the Accountability Board the ability to view investigation details and subpoena witnesses. When I was driving home from work yesterday, I drove past two different police cars that had pulled over Black men. I decided to look up the statistics for our county. Even though Black and Hispanic people make up only one quarter of the county's population, in 2020, they accounted for 44% of all traffic stops and 61% of all people searched. With that in mind, I urge you to reconsider banning people with criminal records from being voting members on the board. If someone has served their time, they should be eligible to offer their insight as a community member impacted by racial profiling and overpolicing. I also just want to add that the number of people killed by police in this country has increased in the last years since George Floyd's murder. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Morris. Oh, I'm so sorry. I need to go in the order that's on my printed list. Randy Williams is not here, correct? All right. Tiara Hawkes. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tiara Hawkes. I'm a juvenile public defender, and more importantly, I am the chairwoman of the Civilian Review Board for Baltimore City. I'm serving my second term. I come to you offering my knowledge and experience of being an integral part of police oversight in Baltimore City and my analysis, investigation, and review of hundreds of police misconduct cases. The CRB in Baltimore City is a representation of nine police districts, all with different careers. There's lawyers, school counselors, nurses, mathematicians, and the like, and we all have different experiences and knowledge in respect to policing. With that, we conduct independent investigations simultaneously with BPD, which is the Baltimore Police Department, and we conduct a thorough review and analysis of both reports. Surprisingly, or not, we do not always come to the same conclusion. One case that was shuffled around social media recently was a woman having a mental health crisis and the BPD officer responding by punching this woman in the face. The BPD concluded that this was a proper use of force. In our review of the bodyboard camera footage and the witness accounts of the incident, the CRB came to a very different conclusion. Just as many of you go to the doctor and get a report, sometimes it is necessary to go to a specialist for a second opinion. So having two reports can come in handy. Secondly, what we know is that strong, independent civilian oversight of police conduct is fundamental to safe communities and effective policing. The Police Accountability Board should have the powers that the CRB in Baltimore has, including investigatory powers and subpoena powers, and whatever other expanded authority you think is necessary to meet this goal. To do anything less would be an injustice to the citizens of this county and a step backwards in true police accountability in Maryland. I challenge you to be a county committed to police accountability and transparency, and why not lead by example ahead of all of the other Maryland counties? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now Reverend Morris, it is your turn.
Don't you see me? Don't you hear me? Do you not know that my daughter did not commit suicide in 2012? Do you not know that the police got it wrong? Do you not know that a police officer sat car side and Googled the matter of death at the scene? I want you to see me and hear me, because I am unique. I know for a fact that they offered certain officers suppressed evidence, manipulated evidence, lied about the DNA. I want you to know that there is a chief of police that will not have a conversation with me, not about my daughter. I don't want to talk to her, and I don't mean her disrespect. We want to meet with the officers about policy and procedures in the community. But I am unique as that, how does that make us feel? I'm a real person. This is 2021, and in 2020, a judge said they do not know how my daughter died or where she died, and the police got it wrong. And you devalue us like we don't have any pain. Would you trade places and have a daughter that there's nobody investigating this anymore? The evidence has been destroyed through the years, and the police officer that did majority of that, that is documented in black and white, not made up, is Officer John Poole, who also in 2020 purged himself on the stand, but he's been promoted. We know we have good officers. Do you not know that we are real? Are you not looking at me? Do you not know that the wind beneath my wings is because my daughter died in this county? It is an unsolved case, no matter how she died. They didn't do their job when that little colored girl body was found. She was worth $100,000 dead. They closed the investigation in 48 hours and have one of them stand up right now and tell you that they didn't do it. Forty-eight hours they closed that investigation. What officer Googles a matter of death at the death scene and they ruled it a suicide? And as I closed, that judge that finally heard it, well, all we've been asking for is a neutral party to hear both sides of the story. Why did she issue a 58-page opinion that said the Anaronda County Police had erred and the medical examiner had erred in 2021, not 10 years ago, just a few months ago? And that is my testimony. Hear us and see. We know these officers, some of these officers are as fine as gold. We're not against them, but we need for you to consider and make this thing neutral and fair, and thank you for your extra time to speak.
Thank you, Reverend Morris. Ms. Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Amy Cruz. I'm a resident of Annapolis County, District 6, and I'm going to read my testimony tonight as I only got through my intro last time. I am also here representing the ACLU of Maryland. I've been on the civilian review board in Baltimore City for over six years, and I'm a member of NACOL, the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. If you were to consult with NACOL, which includes current and former police officers across the country, they would tell you that this bill does not go far enough to be an effective accountability board. Related, Montgomery County Council's racial impact statement for the first draft of their PAB bill said it, quote, "will have little to no impact on racial and social inequities as it does not consistently align with the best practices for advancing civilian oversight to improve police accountability." As the ACLU detailed in a letter sent last week, there's nothing in House Bill 670 or any other law that prohibits you from doing what the coalition has recommended. There's a difference between the Law Department's advice and the law. The people who drafted this bill want to keep their FOP endorsement, and the law officers who have said our recommendations are illegal represent police when they are sued by people whose rights have been violated. This is a conflict of interest, which proves the point that we need an independent board with independent investigators. Membership is critical, and this bill has it wrong, most horrifically with its ban on people with past convictions. What year is it? We've been moving in the right direction for 10 years on voting rights, ban the box, investment and reentry. Why are we going in the opposite direction? Finally, the PAB needs to have investigative powers. Take a look at the written testimony of Evangela Brown. Evangela was an investigator for the Baltimore Civilian Review Board for four years. Here are some of what she says in her testimony. "After investigating complaints against law enforcement for over four years, it has been my experience that when it comes to fact gathering, residents are more likely to provide information to a civilian investigator than the police. I have investigated cases simultaneously with law enforcement. In the most recent report from the Baltimore CRB where this data point was published, CRB and PIB, their IA, has different findings in 26% of the complaints. This shows the need for independent investigations. I oppose the bill unless amended to include the coalition's recommendations." Thank you.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. And the final six speakers that I have signed up, although I will call for speakers after that, include William Rauell, Lydia Walther Rodriguez, Emma Buckman, Dorian Rogers, it's Wendy Brown, I believe. It says Wendy on here, but I believe it's Wendy, and Dr. Randy Rauell. And if it is Wendy, my apologies, but I think it's Wendy. Oh, it's Wanda. That's right. I know Ms. Brown. Okay.
I don't remember the order. You can sit anywhere.
You can sit anywhere, and I'll call, I'll just read the order one more time. William Rauell, Lydia Walther Rodriguez, Emma Buckman, Dorian Rogers, Wanda Brown, and Dr. Randy Rauell. So William Rauell, you have the floor. Two minutes. State your name and address for the record.
I thought I would have some prep time than not be nervous. So my name is William Rauell. I work for the city of Annapolis in the mayor's office as the mayor's senior advisor and on public engagement and community relations. And I preface my introduction with that to say I don't speak for the entirety of our city council, as we're still deliberating on some of your findings here and similar to things that you all are grappling with. But I do come at the behest of our mayor, who has, from a few years ago, decided that we were going to pursue a civilian review board. So I want to let you all know on this panel that, or on this council, that this is nothing new. So if it feels like you're doing something- doing something revolutionary, I'm not saying that you aren't doing something groundbreaking, but they have been having these types of deliberations across the country for years and years. And so one of the most disturbing things to me is that it seems like we're having to, like, re-educate to something that I think by now we all should know, that the public has been asking, the public has been asking for accountability and transparency. So I just want to say that as William, but also as a person who works in this area. I want to start by saying that it is imperative that we provide a safe and positive culture within law enforcement agencies that highlight accountability. When police accountability exists, the community gains confidence in police officers, which leads to police officers being more confident in their ability to do their job. I don't think I need to repeat that. But it's a really interesting thing, and it actually happens with all of us in all of our jobs. When we receive reinforcement, when it's positive reinforcement, when there's, when people trust us in our jobs, and people will say, hey, you're doing a good job, and I know that you're not doing a bad job, then we tend to do a better job. The other thing is I just want to give really quickly the definition of accountability, because that may be lost on all of us, and we keep throwing it around. Accountability, this is Webster's definition. It is the acceptance of responsibility for one's own actions. It implies a willingness to be transparent, this is the important part, allowing others to observe and evaluate one's performance. So the key thing in this, when we keep saying that we allow the police to police themselves and investigate themselves, is in order for us to really, truly instill trust in our communities and our law enforcement agencies, which I believe we all want. So this isn't disparaging to individual police officers. This is saying we want this system to work better. We need to allow the people who are impacted to be a part of this system. And the only way to do that, you will find, is in some of these recommendations for fine-tuning this legislation. And I thought I heard a beep, but...
You did. I was, I was letting you finish your thought, but it was a very complicated thought, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rauell. Next, we have Ms. Walther Rodriguez.
So Lydia... Thank you. Lydia was not able to make it, but I will be speaking on her behalf and the behalf of CASA. My name is Leanna Harrison. I'm the research and policy analyst for CASA in Baltimore and central Maryland. We're here today standing united with the Anaronda County Coalition for Police Accountability, and we're testifying in opposition to Bill 1622 unless it is amended with the Coalition's recommendations. I don't, for the sake of brevity, I don't want to reiterate the disparities in you guys' emotions for money as opposed to when we are sharing our stories of grief and loss. But if we can speak in terms of money, the average police misconduct payout is 650,000, with the higher range being around 7 million. So it would only take about two of those 7 million payouts to be the same as that 12 million dollar donation. So I just, like, if we could think in terms of money and lives in the same way, I think it would be helpful for all of us. Moving forward, we wanted to give the example of one of our community members. CASA represents over 120,000 black and brown immigrants in Maryland. One of our members, David, was brutalized by Annapolis police in 2018 by mistaken identity. And in the hospital, he was harassed by police and forced to make a statement in favor of the police, of course, and because of his immigrant status, David agreed to this, and of course, now he has to pay for his own legal expenses. But for the immigrant community, many misconduct cases are abandoned due to police intimidation. There's a point in saying that, and misconduct after abuse has taken police, excuse me, and misconduct after abuse has taken by police officers. Many community members are afraid that their complaints will result in retaliation or other negative consequences, or at best that their complaints will not be taken seriously. So to conclude, we cannot continue to have police officers police themselves, and this is why we stood united and fought for police reforms on the state level in 2021 and had our victory in the Maryland General Assembly. So now that the Police Accountability Boards are soon to be implemented in Anaronda County, we stand united as part of the local Anaronda County Police Accountability Coalition in urging county council members to amend Bill 1622. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Emma Buckman.
Good evening, county council members. My name is Emma Buckman, and I live in Severna Park. I oppose Bill 1622 unless it is amended to include the recommendations of the Anaronda County Coalition for Police Accountability. Honestly, getting up here at all at this point feels futile after the awful display I saw at the last meeting, but I think it's important to explain just how devastating your votes on those amendments to this bill were two weeks ago. Apart from Chairwoman Rodvian and Councilwoman Lacy, this entire council demonstrated to me that in the face of true trauma, you will be unmoved. Even when impacted people come, those who have been personally victimized by the police or who have had family members who were impacted, they made themselves vulnerable for you. They shared their trauma with you, and you will be unfazed. At the last meeting, you heard devastating stories of people impacted by systemic police misconduct. Your testimony from activists and experts explaining how a strong Police Accountability Board protects both citizens and law enforcement, that having a board with subpoena powers and being made up of people who represent those who have the most interactions with law enforcement is what the community wants. And yet, the majority of this council voted down almost every single amendment that community leaders and Police Accountability Board experts appealed to you to include. Each and every time you had the opportunity to show that you were actually listening to the community, you blew it. I was most disappointed in you, Councilwoman Pickard. Your speech to Councilwoman Volkey last year with that ridiculous anti-CRT bill was introduced made me think that we could trust you to listen to the voices of marginalized communities. Now thinking of that speech makes me sick, because I know how hollow it was. Honestly, it shows to me also that you don't really care about the best interests of our police officers. If you did, you would be putting the political ambitions that you are clearly at play here aside, and understand that a police, a strong Police Accountability Board does not only protect the community, it protects officers too. Tonight and at the next meeting, you will have further opportunities to prove me and the other impacted, I'm not impacted, I'm so sorry for claiming that. You will have the opportunity to prove to me and to actual impacted persons and activists that were heartbroken by your callousness wrong. I suggest you take that opportunity.
Thank you. And then the last, oh, no, I'm sorry, not the last at all. We still have three more members of this panel. Mr. Dorian Rogers.
Hey, how are you guys doing? I'm so sorry. I am a resident of Montgomery County, but I go to Salisbury University. I'm the president of the Salisbury University NAACP. And although we're on spring break, we don't have breaks for two things. That is for advocacy, and that's for complacency. So advocacy goes on. That's very first. So we reaffirm the notion of the Police Accountability Board and with opposition for the amendments brought forward, because again, it requires accountability but also consciousness. With that, our chapter stands on the firm beliefs to educate and inform and empower our communities, whether it was through the halls of Salisbury University, which many of our students live in Anaronda County, so I want to make sure that's emphasized. But in addition to that, the boardwalks of Ocean City, our capitol, and of course, right here in Anaronda County. And so as we continue to say the names of people like George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Michael Brown, Anton Black, and most intersectional backgrounds that are, again, impacted by police misconduct and police brutality, we need to, again, remember when we develop policies, it has to be not only consistent but conscious. You know, although we did have a victory, especially when we talk about the Police Accountability Act on state grounds, that is a milestone, but what are we doing as counties to, again, set the bar higher? And although I heard from Montgomery County, it's very disappointing, and believe me, I'm going to be the first to be there, but Anaronda County uses as an opportunity to set the bar for the state of Maryland. We cannot be average. We need to be outliers when we talk about, again, ensuring that we have communities that are equitable, accessible, and inclusive for all peoples regardless of their backgrounds, because again, this is conscious attacks on our peoples, especially when we have young black men and women that have to bury their children on a daily basis. And I cannot attest, because I am not a mother. But I can tell you that I call my mother every day when she tells me she worries about me going when it comes to police brutality. So with that, please, match actions to your words. That is a saying that we have at Salisbury University. And again, as you have students that go to Salisbury University that live in Anaronda County, especially black and brown children with disabilities, LGBTQIA, et cetera, these intersectional entities, take actions and match actions to your words. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown.
Couldie, can you hear me? Brown, I am the eldest daughter of Leroy Perry. My father was killed by a Anaronda County police officer 40 years ago, July the 20th, 1981. It has brought a void in our family. My father was a head. He was a loving father and a grandfather. My mother worked for the telephone company at the time of my father's death. It was the first time she took her sick leave from 1956 to 1981, when he was shot. He was, the unlawful killing of my father, when he was on his way home from work, a simple traffic stop violation. A 27-year-old Anaronda County police officer was asked for his license and registration when he was brutally shot, not once, but twice at close range in the chest. There was a witness, a truck driver across the street, that saw my father fall after the first shot. The police officer reported that my father was launching after him. The grand jury convicted the police officer of manslaughter. The trial was moved from Anaronda County to Garrett County. We had an all-white jury. They deliberated for 50 minutes and acquitted the officer. The officer had prior incidents, a history. Two separate incidents, 1977 and 1979, brutally attacking men, assaulting men while on duty. When is it going to stop? When is it going to stop? Bodies are falling of color on the ground all the time. It is reported the police are shooting people of color every 40 hours, four times the lynchings of Jim Crow. When is it going to stop? There's been many, many incidents since my father's killing of high-bro profile cases. Eric Garner, Breonna Taylor, Freddie Gray, Michael Brown, Bapham Jean, Philanthrop Castle, Amon Arbery, Sandra Bland, Tamia Rice, George Floyd, and in Annapolis, Renato Green. That happened last year. When is it going to stop? Bodies are falling on the ground. People of color, it's got to stop. That concludes my...
Thank you. And finally, in this panel, Dr. Rauell.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And as a researcher and a department chair at Morgan State University and a District 5 resident, and born in, not born, but lived in Harbor House, I have a feeling for community. But what I heard tonight, and the reason why I'm seeing your faces are quite different than what you discussed when we were talking about forestation and all the environmental issues, which are important. But I want you to take a look right now, and if you had a mirror, I want you to look at your face and the difference in what you said and how you felt about the things that were being talked about. But after you heard the pain of folks at this table who came one by one and gave you their story, they gave you the facts, they gave you the history. So you have a job tonight. You have to go home and look in the mirror, and you have to ask yourself, what do I see? Why did I, if I felt the pain, if I see your faces right now, if you didn't feel that pain, then something is wrong. But see, see this whole bill, and I'm just getting kind of familiar with it, it centers around the elephant in the room. It centers around the elephant in the room, and that is trust. See, all this is about better law enforcement, making our community safe, making our place a place where people want to come. All this is about, is about that thing called trust. This meeting started off with Boy Scouts, my scouts, trustworthy, lawyer-friendly, kind, brave, clean, and irreverent. Those are all the things that are, that's what you started this meeting off with. So you heard it. I'm not, I'm not going, this, the whole fact that somebody should not be represented on a group from a community that's, that has, is more vulnerable than others, should not be on the group. Some of the things here are so plain and simple, I teach my students every day in graduate schools. They know this. You should know this. That's how you got elected, because of your community engagement skills. So I just want to close by saying, when you go home and look in the mirror, and you have your opinions, and you know you have to think about those who are in opposition to this, but you ask yourself, why wouldn't I want to amend this bill to meet these small, simple needs that will lead to trust and a better community that we live in? Is that what you want? Thank you.
I ask the audience in the chambers to refrain, and this panel is dismissed. Thank you very much. At this time, if there is anyone else who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. And I see a few Reverend Telet, you made it down first. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Stephen Telet, pastor of Asbury Broadneck United Methodist Church. I live in Severn in District 1. Dr. Rauell is one of my congregation members. I'm very proud of him. I want to start with this. I have law enforcement in my congregation. I have law enforcement in my family. I'm not anti-police. I am anti-bad policing, in the same way that I would be anti-bad doctoring, anti-bad pastoring, but I'm anti-bad police. And if one has a gun, a taser, and a baton on your belt, an authority to detain people or even take a life, this is important. The pain that you've heard is important, the impact of bad policing, which most officers do not do. But when it happens, it's bad, and it has to be addressed, and there has to be accountability. And it may not always start with fatal, a fatal outcome. Sometimes there are patterns of behavior that can portend bad outcomes. I think about a young man in my community, in my congregation, who was with some other young people and was stopped. And there was a point when the officer, and I don't know if they wanted him to stand or sit or whatever, and the officer just hauled off and punched him right in the chest. Now, the kid is this big. Hauled off and punched him in the chest, which, you know, to me, is kind of a punk move, that, you know, you got the gun, you got the baton, and you're punching somebody who's not violent. What's that about? And when he asked him, why did you hit me? And he said, just deal with it. That's some nonsense. No one should feel they have the authority to do that. And again, that can portend challenging behavior later on. And so when we're talking about transparency and accountability, the question that I have for you, and I was having a conversation earlier today with my friend, Deputy Chief Flemings, when he called me and other pastors to come when there were some problems in Meade Village, we were there, because they wanted us there to walk around with them to help lower the temperature. And we did. And we trust each other, okay? And so my question is, what are you afraid of? Why are you afraid of transparency when it's going to make things better for you and make things better for us? And most career fields have accountability, and when they don't, there are problems. Consider my career, for instance. When people could just move ministers around, you got some problems over here, we'll just move you over here. Guess what? We have problems again. We cannot allow that to continue. We've heard about best practices and the cold. We need to pay attention to that. We need an independent board with investigative powers, and impacted communities need to be represented. And this is my final portion here. Inflexibility and intransigence are not an option. A toothless tiger will serve no one's best interests. We need to fix this. And I think that adults need to sit down in a room, interact respectfully, and work it out, because the trust has to be restored so that there can then be the respect, the mutual respect between the police and the community that we need to function as a community. And we cannot sit around on our thumbs and just say, well, this is my position, and that's it. This is not that time. And I would like for Anaronda County to take the lead in the state of Maryland and get it right. And I'm so committed to it that even though I need more to do, like I got, like I need a hole in my head, I would be willing to serve on the PAB to help it, to help get it right. But we need to get it right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Telet. I will... I will, oh, okay. Are you willing to go next? I believe, are you Ms. Sell? Okay. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Sell, and I live at 444 Linwood Drive in Severna Parks, Maryland. During public testimony at the last council meeting, I heard many people say that police officers put their lines on the job, their lives on the job every day, and that this is a reason we shouldn't implement efforts to hold them accountable. I personally found this argument to be a bit troubling. First, having a dangerous job doesn't mean you shouldn't be held accountable for what you do on the job. I think there are actually arguments that there should be more accountability and standards in dangerous jobs. Second, according to a 2021 Business Insider article, garbage collectors have a higher fatality rate than police officers. Garbage collection is a very important part, function of our society, and without it, things will get pretty disgusting pretty quickly. It is also run at the county level, similar to our police force. Yet I don't hear many county citizens running to the county council meeting to talk about the safety of garbage collectors. Why not? Because the argument of caring about the safety of police officers is often a red herring used to tug at your heartstrings, and of course it is, it works. It's much easier to win an argument about police safety than trying to tell you that police sometimes do bad things that they need to be held accountable for. However, that's the argument that we're here for. I recently heard that the county needs to balance the needs of police officers and citizens. I'm a bit confused by that. One group, the police officers, works for the other group, the citizens. The citizens pay for the salaries and training of the police officers. The police officers serve the citizens. Why should the citizens pay for the police officers to arrest certain citizens at higher rates, treat certain citizens worse, kill certain citizens at higher rates, unless some of those citizens are purposely paying for those police officers to do those things? There doesn't need to be a balance between citizens and the employee, and the employees they pay to work for them. There needs to be justice, and the only way to justice is to implement the demands of the Anaronda County Coalition for Police Accountability. If these demands are not going to be met, this bill should be voted down. I'd also like to note that, as you probably saw, many of the supporters from our coalition were not able to make it through this county council meeting because they had to leave for various reasons. But I do notice that all of the police officers who came to sit in the crowd are still here, and I'm hoping they're not still getting paid to be participating in a disgusting political maneuver.
All right. Moving on to our next speaker, Mr. Wadi.
Thank you so much. My name is Stephen Wadi. I live at 7968 Heather Miss Drive in Severn, Maryland. I'm here, one, to say that the coalition does support Amendment Number 43 regarding oversight and investigation on the police accountability board. You all have been handed, as Jen Sell said, a pile of dung, not just from the state legislature or from the county executive, but from the Supreme Court, from every other federal and state government that has abdicated their responsibilities regarding police perform, regarding police accountability. And now, as I mentioned to you all previously about this entire situation when Donald Trump was president, it's now at your feet again. It's at your, and you all are the decision-makers. We are here to provide you with the help to make those decisions. That's what the community has come out for, is to help you make those decisions regarding all of the issues that you're hearing about. And as Reverend Tillet said, we are available to help you make these decisions wherever you are, in District Seven, District Five, doesn't matter. We are here to help because we are all affected. And so we, we're not just pleading, not just demanding, but, you know, we're recommending, and we're also going to be voting, and it's going to be more than voting if you keep ignoring. I don't think that it's, it's something that you all ignored in 2020, when I received phone calls at 3:00 in the afternoon about the body cameras, you know? And it was not being ignored when you saw Minneapolis on fire. It's not going to be ignored when you see other cities on fire, when people hear and see what actually happens with Anaronda County Police. When they see body camera footage, it's going to come out. And so we have to have the processes in place to make sure that this misconduct is prevented. This is a preventative measure, preventative measure. And so it needs to be a strongest preventative measure that we can have to make sure that we prevent our own community from going up in flames. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wadi. And finally, Mr. O'Tetto.
Phil O'Tetto, 1800 Poplar Avenue, Annapolis. Well, I told you last time that this bill was a turd, and you need to start fresh. When a bill has 50-plus amendments, it's clear to me that it's a turd. Because if you won't start fresh, and y'all are going to pass this turd of a bill instead of flushing it, let's see if we can at least polish this turd. Here's a non-exhaustive list of a few things that an effective PAB must include: independent investigatory power, subpoena power, no current, former, or retired police or their immediate family. Otherwise, you're just asking the police to police themselves, which they've shown repeatedly they cannot do. You're on course to create a PAB with no power and attempting to stack it with former police steeped in the thin blue line culture we're trying to change and sycophantic police supporters and tell us that this is accountability to the community, maybe to the law enforcement community, but not to the people they're supposed to serve. As I said last time, in my personal experience in numerous police interactions, police regularly use the leverage of knowing people generally don't want to get arrested to violate people's rights and gain compliance. This is extremely problematic if you understand the history of police being on the wrong side of history, as I reviewed last time, as it effectively quashes public dissent and creates an untenable situation. Whereas MLK put it, true peace is not merely the absence of tension, it's the presence of justice. What you're conveying is that for those exercising our rights and advocating for systemic change nonviolently in a way any police officer doesn't like, having our rights violated and perhaps a bit of violence from the police is acceptable. I tried to tell you that you're not listening, and your votes to the amendment showed it. Many people I spoke with are so disenfranchised, they don't even think it's worth their time and won't make a difference if they re-traumatize themselves by telling their stories of poor, rights-violating interactions with the police, and you're proving them right and come across as indifferent to their suffering and are undermining the legitimacy of the government as a whole, whether you know it or not. JFK said, those who make peaceful revolution impossible make violent revolution inevitable. You're making it impossible, but you're making it more difficult at a minimum. The most dangerous thing a government can create is a person with nothing to lose. Disenfranchised and marginalized people who cannot get accountability or justice when their rights are violated by police are left with little other choice, but then eventually choose violence. And then, of course, the violence they commit will be condemned, the systemic violence and injustices that have been perpetrated against them for decades will be overlooked, as happened with the uprising in Baltimore around the police murder of Freddie Gray. I want you to be fully aware of the situation you're exacerbating on the course you're on with a weak PAB and no real justice or accountability. Keep this in mind as you vote on the amendments in this bill. As I said last time, get on the right side of history.
I'll ask the audience to refrain. Thank you. And thank you to this panel very much for your testimony. All right. At this time, I'll make one last call for anyone that would like to come down and testify. You may have a seat and state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Derek Graham. I'm a member of the Fraternal Order of Police of Anaronda County, Maryland. I've been an officer for more than seven years, where I've spent time as a patrol officer, sex crimes detective, and task force officer. I'm here to ask you to continue the hard work that you have been doing to get the police accountability legislative correct. Finding the right balance is never easy, especially when we all are sailing unknown territories. Nobody has created Maryland Police Accountability Boards before, so the thoughtfulness and care that you are going into this work, that you are putting into the work is greatly appreciated. Police work is not getting easier. Criminals are consistently finding new and high-tech ways to evade capture. Meanwhile, we are losing the ability to hire and retain police officers and can effectively, we can effectively counter both the new and the old ways of committing criminal acts. Accountability is important. Every level and aspect of government is and should be accountable to the people it serves. But at the same time, if we create such stringent controls that our government servants feel paralyzed and unable to do their jobs, we will never see any progress or true service. We select police officers from our communities, and we hold them to a high standard. We cannot expect perfection from anything humanity creates, and we must all be willing to learn and to grow. Therefore, it is important that the Police Accountability Board and Administrative Charging Committee find the correct balance so that we, as police officers, can continue to hold the line against rising crime that surrounds us, but still engender the trust and compassion of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shire, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Mike Shire, Fraternal Order of Police from Anaronda County. I want to thank this council for the time and effort that they've put into this bill. The legislation has far-ranging implications for our communities and our law enforcement professionals. We continue to reject the notion that we, as police officers, are against police accountability. To be clear, we don't believe that the danger of our job exempts us from being accountable to the citizens we serve. There's no place in our profession for those who lack the integrity that this office and the community deserves. We live and work in this community. We are also citizens. We have a vested stake in the accountability of all of our government, including the police. There's been a lot of anger in this room tonight. There's been a lot of fear here. I've felt anger. I share the emotion of fear. I understand it. I have faced the unknown. I have faced evil. But anger and fear will not solve our problems. We must work together to find common ground. We must rise above the anger and the fear, and we must build bridges with ourselves and our communities. Please help us find this common ground to build a bridge for a better tomorrow. I thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. And at this time, I'll call anyone else who would like to come down and share their thoughts on this bill. Yeah, come on down. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Okey-dokey. My name is Dawn Dalton. My address is 1003 Mandarin Drive, Upper Marlboro, Maryland, 20774. And I would like to say that I had absolutely no intention of speaking whatsoever, but I am appalled at what I just heard. I'm stunned. I'm disgusted. Personally, I'm the mother of a 37-year-old young black male from Prince George's County, Maryland, who was brutally beaten, falsely charged, the whole nine yards. My family had gone through hell for four and a half years. I came here tonight to stand in solidarity with other families, just asking for justice, and just to hear the gentleman that just walked away, that are officers, and let me be clear, my grandfather was a police officer. I have police officers in my family. I have police officers that are my friends, that I respect and I love, and I want them to make it safely home to their families, just like I wanted my son to make it safely home to me. But as a mother of a black male in the United States, but even in Prince George's County, in the state of Maryland, I continue to worry every day and every night that my son is not home, that my son will make it home safely, because I know what so many other black families know, that our lives are not valued. As a mother, like someone said earlier, as a black mother, me crying out for my son, I'm not going to get the same attention that a white mother would get, that whose family member, whose child was brutalized or falsely charged or what have you. I've heard many people tonight speak about the death of their loved ones or losing a child. I did not lose my son, but I want to say this. Me and my family's lives have never been the same since the day that my son was brutalized. So the son that I had before the day that the police decided to beat him and break his ribs and falsely charge him is not the same son that I have anymore. My life is not the same. So what I do is I work with other families to help them realize justice. For any officer to say that you're fighting evil is evil. We are simply asking for justice. We're simply asking to be humanized. We're simply saying that our children's lives and our lives have just as much value as yours or these officers. I'm not against officers. I'm against injustice. Our lives deserve better. We all deserve better, and shame on any one of you that votes any other way. Thank you.
My name is Tamara McKinnon. I'm from Prince George's County, Maryland. I'm the daughter of a police officer. I'm a sister of Secret Service agents. I'm an aunt of metropolitan police officers. My family is full of Secret Service, metropolitan, and even CIA. If you're doing your job and you're doing the right thing, what do you have to fear? The bottom line is, right is right and wrong is wrong, and if you're doing what is right, you should not fear who's watching at any time.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, seeing no additional movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 16-22 as amended is now closed. At this time, we do have a number of amendments, so we're starting with Number 36, where we left off last time with Number 35. So at this time, Madam Secretary, oh, actually, let's give a minute for the panel to come and take their seats.
I think I need to read the title.
I'm sorry?
I just need to read the title.
Oh, okay.
Close the public hearing, right?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, yes. Please read the title of Bill Number 16-22 as amended.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we take a brief 10-minute recess. Maybe we come back at 10:40, just so that we all have an opportunity to use the restroom before we go into this marathon session on amendments.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The council will be in recess until 10:40. Let's, give us the 13 minutes, but we'll be 13 minutes. I'll ring the bell.
The judge.
For what?
All right. The Anarondale County Council is now back in session. At this time, we're going to move on to our amendments to Bill Number 16-22 as amended. And our first amendment is Number 36. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 36.
Madam Chair, I hate to be a stickler for the rules, but I'm a stickler. I am a stickler for the rules, what can I say? I need to read the title of 1622 to officially close the public hearing. I didn't get a chance to do it.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bill.
Bill Number 1622, An Ordnance Concerning Police Accountability Board.
All right. At this time, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 36.
Amendment Number 36. This amendment requires an executive director of the Police Accountability Board to be appointed by the county executive and confirmed by resolution of the county council. Requires the executive director to be an attorney and manage board staff. Allows a county executive to remove an executive director unless prevented by five affirmative votes of the county council and makes certain technical changes to the subsection.
All right. Ms. Pickard and Ms. Fiedler are the sponsors of this bill, so whichever of you would like to -- it looks like Ms. Fiedler is going to speak. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The summary is self-explanatory, but I'll just add highlights that this adds council oversight to the appointment and removal if that takes place of the executive director, very similar to the language that we saw several years ago for the county attorney, and also requires that the executive director be an attorney and manage board staff. And I ask for my colleagues' support this evening.
Ms. Pickard, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no.
All right, thank you. Mr. Barron.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So the--
Oh, I'm so sorry. Before I let you speak, may I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second, Allison Pickard.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Barron.
Now who's a stickler for the rules? So, um, thank you to the sponsors of this. I know this is a concept that a number of council members have worked on. The administration supports this amendment.
Is there any discussion amongst my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 36.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chapruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 36 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 37.
Amendment Number 37. This amendment allows childcare and transportation costs to be eligible for reimbursement if necessary to attend a scheduled meeting of the board.
All right, this is Ms. Lacy. And my amendment, Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think we started to discuss this at the last meeting, but I think it's important as just a step to help show that it's important for members of the PAB of any economic level to be able to participate in the PAB. And the things that, you know, can be a barrier for people sometimes would be whether or not they can get childcare, whether or not they can get transportation, how much is it going to cost for me to attend regular meetings, and trying to set that up. And I'm cognizant that we, as a county, don't provide that level of support to our police officers. I think that's something that we should remedy. I think there's probably not just our police officers, but all of our public safety officers who also should receive that kind of benefit. But while it could be possible that, you know, whoever is administering expenses for the board would say these expenses would just be covered, it's better to make it official policy to ensure that they actually are. And with that, I move the amendment.
Is there a second? I'll second. All right, Mr. Barron.
The administration has no opposition if the council so decides to adopt this.
All right, thank you very much. And I see, Ms. Fiedler, you have your -- nope. All right. No further discussion from my colleagues? No? All right. We're determined to go fast tonight. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 37.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Chapruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 37 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 38.
Amendment Number 38. This amendment requires the county executive to advertise its appointment positions to the Administrative Charging Committee for at least 30 days prior to appointment.
And again, this is Ms. Lacy. And I have amendment, Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing to add, move to adopt.
Second? All right, Mr. Barron, any comment?
No opposition.
All right, thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 38.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chapruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 38 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 39.
Amendment Number 39. This amendment requires the Police Accountability Board to appoint from among its voting members the two civilian members of the Administrative Charging Committee and the civilian members of any hearing boards unless those members are not qualified or are unavailable to serve.
This again is Ms. Lacy. And I have amendment, Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the concept behind this amendment is to most efficiently make use of the training and resources that are going to be put into these members of the PAB by having, you know, I think we, when we have our Administrative Charging Committee, they need to be ready to go. They need to have also had that training. And since the PAB has the authority to appoint these folks, but the PAB can't do that until they themselves are embodied, it seems to me it's useful to have a pool of people potentially available. And if the PAB needs to look outside that pool of people, then that's fine. Provision is made for that in the amendment. With that, I move to adopt.
And I'll second. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration appreciates the sponsors intent here. We've had a number of discussions along these lines. The administration believes that this violates state law, that the state law prescribes that the ACC members may be members of the PAB, but we do not believe we can restrict to them.
Any questions for my colleagues? Go ahead, Mr. Chapruski.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I think we're going to get into a bunch of amendments here that have interpretation. So I'd like the Law Office to chime in to figure out exactly, you know, their thoughts on this, because, again, there's a lot of requests to do things, but I want to know, can we do them? And if we do them, is the law going to be challenged? And of course, people could, and I understand that, but I want to know, you know, directly because there's just been, you know, a lot of discussion about, well, let's add things, let's remove things, and this is one of those ones, and I think we'll have several others. I'd appreciate some guidance on that. Thank you.
Lori Blair Class, I'm our Deputy County Attorney. The Administrative Charging Committee, the composition is set forth in 3-104 of the Public Safety Article. The chair of the PAB is specified, and then it's also specified that there will be two civilian members selected by the PAB and two civilian members selected by the county executive. You know, while it's not explicitly said they can't be members of the PAB, I think there is an intent that they be different because the chair of the PAB is already automatically a member. So I don't think it would, if they did appoint somebody that was already on the PAB, I don't think it would be violative of the state law, but I think requiring them is pushing it.
Seeing no additional questions or comments from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 39.
Ms. Pickard.
No.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Chapruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 39 has failed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 40.
Amendment Number 40. This amendment requires a statement of affirmation from the complainant that the contents of the complaint are true to the best of their knowledge, information, and belief.
Again, this is an amendment from Ms. Lacy. And I, Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I've had many conversations with folks about this sort of thorny problem that the General Assembly left us when they did not include language to this effect in HB 670. And all they said, they removed the notary requirement, but everything related to their intent concerning whether a complaint must be made under penalty of perjury is, you know, left for us to look at the floor debates and see what we think. Well, the floor debates are not themselves the law, and since nothing about this, the HB 670 is actually silent on this particular issue, it occurred to me that, you know, one of the concerns that our police officers have, and I think it's a very just concern, is that people may file false complaints and that they are then, you know, put through the rigors of investigation and the ACC process based on false complaints. I think that these complaints should be taken very seriously. They should be held to the same standards that you would be if you're going to testify in court as to something that happened, then you're going to do so affirming under the penalty of perjury. So to me, if we add this in, we are placing a balance more appropriately on protecting people from false complaints. There should be absolutely no incentive for anybody to file a false complaint. And whether or not this form says that, they still should not do that. But I think, you know, at a minimum, we need to be giving people notice that there's no, the state didn't create a right to file a false complaint when they didn't include it in HB 670. So, on balance, this is one that I think should help not just, you know, have a good protection for police officers, but also should restore the public trust in this process to know that you're not allowed to just walk in and file a false complaint, and there will be penalties for that. So with that, I move the amendment.
And I'll second that. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The legislative history on this is actually a little bit informative because it wasn't just the floor debate. There was language in the original bill, I believe, and I'll defer to law if it was a committee amendment or a floor amendment that actually stripped a requirement that the complaint not be sworn. So the General Assembly did show some intent to remove the language from 670, and maybe Mr. Hunt can back that up. But we don't believe that this would be prohibited by our interpretation of state law, so we do not have an objection to the amendment on this grounds, on those grounds. This is a policy choice for the council.
I'm sorry, would Office of Law be willing to weigh in here and share your thoughts?
Sorry. Ethan Hunt, Office of Law. That was an amendment, and I'd have to check. It was either an amendment in the House Judiciary Committee or a conference committee report amendment.
And that amendment was voted down?
It, the amendment--
Or struck?
Yeah. The bill originally specifically stated the complaint did not need to be notarized or sworn to under penalty of perjury, and the requirement that it did not need to be sworn to under the penalty of perjury was struck.
All right. Seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 40.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Chapruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 40 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 41.
Amendment Number 41. This amendment requires that the review of the investigation will be completed within one year and one day after the filing of a complaint by a citizen, and that a law enforcement agency must complete its investigation and review within eight months after filing of the complaint. Madam Chair, I think there's a tiny typo in the text of the amendment. In the third line, it says filing or, I think it's supposed to say filing of. So with the sponsor's permission, I think that's a technical enough edit that we could just correct that right now?
As a cosponsor, I consent.
Me too.
Corrected.
Thank you. And thank you for catching that. Ms. Lacy, as--
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Speaking on our behalf today.
So, the first sentence is from the state law, that this whole investigation process is supposed to be completed within a year and a day of the filing of the complaint. I had seen other groups suggest that the law enforcement agency portion of the investigation should have a time limit on it to ensure that the Administrative Charging Committee can complete its work so that the two, it's A plus B equals C. C is a year and a day, so if we make A eight months, then that leaves four months and a day for the ACC. I realize, you know, there's probably some other parameter or range that might work, but I hope you like the idea, and I move to amend.
And second, Mr. Barron.
Thank you. You're the sponsor, the cosponsor, you're putting out an important issue with the way 670 was drafted. However, 670 puts these two together. The LEA and the ACC is a year and a day. We don't believe that this is acceptable under state law. The amendment.
Could I ask again the Office of Law to weigh in on their thoughts here?
Certainly, Ethan Hunt, Office of Law. Simply because this would impose a deadline for non-county law enforcement agencies that aren't subject to the control and supervision of the county, they're not under our jurisdiction, so that'd be City of Annapolis, Anarondale County, Community College, Sheriff's Department.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Lacy. And then I see Ms. Hare. I see your light.
To clarify then on that, since in the entire bill, we're faced with this awkward situation, right? Wouldn't the other law enforcement agencies, it's sort of two-pronged question. One is, if it only applies to the Anarondale County Police Department, then that's all it would apply to, and the others would be free to ignore the eight-month timeline. But the second prong is, did HB 670 contemplate the situation where the LEA doesn't finish its investigation within a year and a day of the complaint?
I'm sorry, so the question is whether the state contemplated that issue of the timing and not finishing within a year and a day?
Yes, that's the second question. The first is just interpretively, wouldn't the other agencies just ignore the eight months if it doesn't apply to them?
Well, the problem, yeah, and, you know, a lot of the problems we have were created by the state law. I think we can all kind of agree with that. But the issue is that law enforcement agency is defined as the same as it is in state law, so I don't think that while, those law enforcement agencies really can't ignore it if we're referring to law enforcement agencies. I mean, they are included within that. However, you know, then that becomes a total, a whole question of enforcement because we don't have the ability to enforce against those agencies. I think the year and, I think the state should have thought about the notion of a year and a day, but it's true that the year and a day is for everything to be done. And yeah, I agree that there's an issue with getting something to the, through that process in that time. You have to kind of back up from that and have some issue, but I do think it's problematic in enforcing against other agencies other than the Anarondale County Police Department.
And if I may comment?
Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. One thing to consider is investigations do take time. They're very complex. Several witnesses, evidentiary items, et cetera, need to be collected. And we also have to consider the fact that if there's a criminal investigation, that supersedes the administrative investigation. We don't conduct those investigations in tandem. We wait until the criminal investigation concludes, and then we begin the administrative investigation so as not to commingle the two and nor compromise either investigation. I don't know that eight months would be enough when you consider some criminal investigations exceed an eight-month time period. And another consideration is if there's a criminal investigation being conducted by another entity hypothetically, the AG's office, we have no control over what that timeline looks like. So I think we are finding ourselves in a bit of a pickle by limiting ourselves to eight months.
I agree. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I guess so my, my question, I suppose, how do you envision the practical working of the bill without this amendment in terms of that year and a day with the investigation and the charging committee? If we haven't given them distinct timeframes, give me a real life, how is it going to work?
So I'll let the expert talk, but I will flag the state Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission is developing regulations that may affect some of this stuff.
Okay.
The issue that the sponsor is hitting on with this amendment, I think, is a flaw in the state bill that needs to be corrected at the state level. And in the meantime, we're gonna just have to make do by working together to get it done in that timeframe. But Chief, if you have anything to add?
And again, a criminal investigation could complicate the matter and extend it beyond the year and a day. We all have experience with some criminal investigations that have taken beyond a year, particularly during, you know, extreme circumstances like a pandemic.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. When I read over this amendment, it made sense, seemed reasonable. In this discussion, I'm realizing while well-intended, it could prohibit flexibility in things that we don't have control over. So my question is, and I know that this isn't part of the amendment, but you bring up a point, Chief, about criminal, a criminal investigation going on and not commingling the two, and that they can take longer. What happens, or is there any language in the state law that tells us what we do when we have a criminal investigation? And I mean, a year and a day with a criminal investigation intermingled but separate, that's a pretty tight timeline. Am I right?
You're correct, councilwoman, and I wish I could say the answer was yes, but no, there is nothing in this bill.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you. Just to be clear, the criminal investigation that we're talking about is a criminal investigation of the police officer's conduct, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So--
Or--
Or--
Actions, lawful actions, but a criminal investigation--
Well, conduct. That's why I say conduct, is a neutral term, whether it's good or bad, I don't know, it's being investigated. Conduct is being investigated.
In the course of his or her duties, yes.
Right, and in the course of the citizen just going about their business. So we're talking about whether or not the police officer's conduct is, rises to the level of criminality or is simple misconduct, like unintentional or negligent or reckless or some sort of legal standard like that. That's the way I'm thinking of it anyway. And while I know that quite often civil investigations follow criminal investigations and don't occur in parallel, I didn't see anything in HB 670 that said they have to occur in series.
And again, once the criminal investigation concludes is when we begin the administrative investigation. We're very much aware of the details of the criminal investigation, but enough of the time, you have to hear the outcome of the case before you can even begin--
Right, but I think this is where we're talking past each other because the timeline starts from, in this bill, it starts from the day the complaint was filed. And those aren't necessarily all the same timeframes, which is going to cause us lots of confusion.
Mr. Morris.
I think I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Criminal investigation and then the administrative investigation. You're saying the start, the clock starts for the administrative investigation at the time that that investigation begins, and we have a year and a day from that point despite the criminal investigation. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
If I may, I'm going to ask Office of Law real quick, and then Mr. Morris came up. But I think, Councilwoman Lacy, the clock starts when the citizen files the complaint?
On the year and a day, that's correct. And I guess, because I think what's going to even more confuse these timelines is before that, I think what you're saying is before that, the criminal investigation may have already started, but I think also there's an issue where the complaint may actually result in the criminal investigation as well. So, yeah, but unfortunately, none of that is addressed by the state law.
I'm just going to jump in. I have a concern that, you know, obviously, the state law put us in a position where we're kind of stuck in either having a timely investigation that would allow the ACC to do its, or to perform its function, to perform its role, but also allow the normal process of a criminal investigation, if needed, would come before an internal investigation. So we have these two things that really just don't fit together. So I almost see what's, you know, we're wrong either way, right? I mean, we're wrong either way, and we're right either way. So to me, it seems like, well, this is going to be a question state is going to have to answer at some point. At some point, the situation is going to come forward. But in the meantime, I feel like at least attempting to put down timeframes for everyone to work into will ensure that, and again, I, when I'm talking about this whole process, I think you have to imagine the worst possible actor, not who is in the room, but you have to imagine the worst possible actor on the law enforcement side. And you have to imagine, but you also have to create a process that works for a person, the actor, the law enforcement actor that did absolutely everything right. And you have to get a process that works for both. So I feel like the timeframe here, we're kind of, we lose either way. I think I'm going to support the timeframe because at least it gives us something to, you know, to kind of move, keep things moving forward, and the state is going to have to answer this question regardless of which way we vote on this amendment.
May I ask?
Oh, and I will, go ahead.
I was, I just wanted to highlight what the chief said earlier, that there is an AG's process under House Bill 600, and that's all, that law has already taken effect. And so with the AG's offices investigating police-involved shootings, there could be a misconduct involved within that police-involved shooting, but because we are not the arbiter of those investigations, it would be the AG's office, and sometimes they can, you know, tell us that they don't want us to release a body-worn camera footage, that they don't want us to release certain evidences. The ACC needs those evidences to make their determination. So I would just caution in absolute, I think that there needs to be something put in there, you know, barring an investigation by, you know, an entity outside of our control.
I definitely understand and respect that. I feel like at some point, the state is going to have to weigh in, whether it's the AG or the state legislature. Somebody's going to have to come and resolve these two, you know, they're just completely in conflict. So we can't have it, you know, a year and a day. Assuming the state wanted the ACC to actually be able to go forward with its process, and they put this year and a day deadline, they have to be able to go forward with this process. Presumably, they didn't want it to say, you know, well, if it's a really long investigation, then ACC isn't going to have the opportunity to do that. I can't imagine that that's what they wanted either. So I feel like we kind of, we really could vote either way, and we're wrong and we're right.
I, that's absolutely right. That's absolutely right. What the administration prefers here is consistency with state law. I think the issue that has been raised is important. It is something that the legislature is going to have to wrestle with at the state level to fix this and a number of other issues that have come up when you create an entirely new framework for this stuff.
I'm gonna jump back in and say, I'm not really sure that one is more consistent with state law than the other. I mean, they created, the state law created a process for the ACC to be able to review the internal investigation. So voting for a timeframe that would allow them to do that, I think, is also consistent with state law. So I don't think that this is, I think we have, we just have two completely competing, we have two completely competing concepts here. I'm gonna give Mr. Volkey the floor.
If I may respond just real quickly.
Very quickly.
Because the issue is also our ability to regulate other LEAs. It's one thing for this council to say to the chief sitting next to me, you have to do it this way. It is another thing for us to regulate the other LEAs in the county. That's my only point.
Madam Chair, could I just, there really is a constitutional argument, if you'll just bear with me for a second.
Go ahead.
The criminal investigation does not, the officer, if they are under a criminal investigation, their constitutional rights remain in place, so they don't have to make statements. This comes down to the Garrity decision, the U.S. Supreme Court. So the, an officer that made any statements in violation of constitutional rights can't be used, because they're under duress for an administrative investigation, can't be used against them in a criminal case. That's why the criminal case and the administrative investigation have to be bifurcated in order to protect their constitutional rights if they're under a criminal investigation. The state has put, has created the conundrum. Only the state can fix it. But to put the time limits in place puts the potential for violation of the officer's Garrity rights and subsequently risks a criminal prosecution if the officer is compelled to violate their own rights. Supreme Court.
I mean, I understand that. I'm just not 100% sure what would require, what would require that officer, if they were subject to a criminal investigation and they were, you know, not going to make a self-incriminating statement, what would compel them? And what, and what part of this would they be compelled to do that? Why would they not have that same right in a, in any of these other investigative or review processes?
Would they have a right to maintain their silence under the Fifth Amendment for the criminal investigation? They do not have that same right as a respondent in an administrative investigation. We can compel the statement. That's where we have to avoid the conflict of compelling a statement under an administrative investigation and not violate their constitutional rights if there's a criminal investigation. As was pointed out, Senate Bill 600 is investigated by the Maryland State Police under the direction of the Attorney General's office. While that investigation is ongoing, there's no administrative investigation that's gonna entail because we're not gonna, we can't risk compromising the integrity of the criminal investigation being conducted by the AG. The state created the problem. The problem is that we're left to try to figure it out. And I don't, I think it's a mistake to risk violating the potential, to risk compromising a criminal investigation for an administrative investigation.
I definitely see what you're saying, but I'm not convinced that, you know, because an administrative process is allowed to compel an officer to, you know, give a statement if they're under criminal investigation, in my mind, that would be, that would prevail. I'm gonna let Mr. Volkey chime in because he's had his light on and maybe he's got the answers for all of us.
I doubt I have all the answers. But isn't there like a general order or something? I think there is in Annapolis. It says you have to cooperate with an ongoing investigation and if you're an officer and you don't, then you're violating that order or something? Am I, am I close to the mark maybe on that?
If an officer is under an administrative investigation...
Yeah.
...and they are compelled to make a statement under duress, failure to make that statement under duress would be insubordination.
Okay.
It's an administrative charge.
Which then leads to another charge on top of whatever else they're facing.
To, for the administrative.
Right, exactly.
But again, that's where we run afoul of ordering an officer to make a statement while under duress that could compromise the integrity of the criminal investigation because that statement can no longer be used.
Okay, so then, can I ask the question I was gonna ask?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. My initial question...
Oh, that wasn't even the question? Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just trying to follow up on the train of thought of where we were. So my initial question was going to be, just speaking plainly with all of you, it sounds like your preference is you understand the intent, you like it, and we say that a lot, but ultimately, you don't like this amendment. You would prefer this amendment to not be voted on. Because I was initially a yes on this amendment, but now hearing the discussion, I'm thinking it sounds like you all, being the people who have to implement this, are really suggesting that we vote this down. So if I could just get a plain answer that says, we don't like this, we'd free to vote it down, that would help me.
That's correct, sir.
I'm just gonna ask one follow-up and I'll, I see Ms. Lacy also has her light, but if you were conducting an internal investigation and you knew that there was also a criminal investigation where that person who was being investigated in the criminal investigation, their conduct was being investigated, and you knew that they had that right not to, you know, incriminate themselves, why would you, why would you jeopardize that criminal investigation by asking them? I mean, that's really within the control of the law enforcement agency, right?
And that's the point. We wouldn't. So that derails the administrative investigation until the criminal investigation's outcome is finalized. And that's where we run into conflict, not just with the amendment, but with the whole year and a day. Current law allows the freeze.
So it's, again, it's back to the, it's back to the, it doesn't matter if it's a year and a day, we're gonna have the same problem no matter what, whether we put this timeframe in or not.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
I actually think there is a simpler answer. The bigger issue is that HB 670 evidenced a clear intent that a complaint be resolved by investigation of an LEA and a decision by the ACC within a total of a year and a day from the day the complaint was made. Now, if the ACC has investigative authority and subpoena powers and they're working with the LEA and the LEA still has to investigate the complaint, and there's a lot you can do without actually talking to the officer or compelling his testimony, which is the only thing the Fifth Amendment protects. It doesn't protect documents, it doesn't protect body camera footage that might be either incriminating or showing of misconduct or whatever. And so a solution would be, the LEA does the investigation that it can and it specifically notes in its report and findings to the ACC which things it couldn't investigate. We couldn't talk to the officer, that person wasn't available, we didn't try to compel them. You see how far you can get so that you can resolve the complaint because the legislature said it needs to be done within a year and a day. If it needs to be reopened at some later point because the officer perhaps becomes available, then I guess that could happen. I don't know, I'm not in that process, you know, but from our standpoint here, we can still look to setting an orderly process for making sure that complaints are handled to whatever completion can be had within a year and a day.
Again, I'm gonna cite Rhonda McCoy, Annapolis Police Department. I'm gonna cite House Bill 600 and the AG's power in investigating police-involved shootings. That they come in, they get the ability to take over crime scenes, they bring their own texts, they can compel us not to release body worn camera footage, they can compel us not to release documents, all the things that I believe and I think that you believe that the ACC would need to come to a reasonable conclusion. Not to have all that information is unfair to the citizen and is unfair to the officer. If they make a decision or try to weigh anything without all the evidence being heard. In these cases, we will not be able to do that. Do I think that that would be probable at some time? Yes, I think it's likely to happen and that the state must answer.
Madam Chair. Just, just real quick, I have to point out, most of the misconduct that we are likely to see is, thank God, not officer-involved shootings, right? Those are very rare. They're extremely rare. And the point is, I think, that in 670, the legislature said complaints need to be investigated and addressed in a timely manner because that's an important part of oversight, an important part of having accountability, real accountability to citizens. So even if it can't consider all possible evidence, it can reach a point. That's the point that I'm trying to make.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Sorry. I do appreciate the suggestion on a way to work around this, but I go back to what Ms. McCoy just said. How do you move forward with a complete investigation when you're only using the bits and pieces that are available to you as, you know, appointed in this role? So we needed more guidance in the state legislation and this is what we're left with, that's all.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
I think it's a difference between putting together, you know, a thousand-piece jigsaw puzzle when you've seen the box or when you haven't. That's really what we're doing here. We have not seen the box and we just have to do our best. So I think we should vote.
All right. And I'm gonna, even though I know, I hear all of the arguments, I also feel like the state told us to put together a process that allows the ACC to review that. So until the state, basically what I'm saying is I'm kicking it back to the state and say, you need to figure this out. We're gonna go this way, but you guys gotta figure this out because you put us in a conflict. So seeing no additional red lights from my colleagues and knowing that we have quite a number of amendments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 41.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Roddian.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 41 has failed.
All right, thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 42.
Amendment Number 42, this amendment requires that a law enforcement agency respond to requests for additional information, investigation, subpoenas for documents or witnesses, and review of body camera footage within 10 days of the request.
Again, this was Ms. Lacy and I's amendment. Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this refers to a step in the process where the LEA has completed its investigation and the whole thing has been turned over to the Administrative Charging Committee, the idea being set a timeframe to ensure cooperation and being able to finish up the work of the committee. And with a move to adopt.
And I'll second. And Mr. Barron.
Sorry. Again, I think we're hitting another issue where the state law doesn't quite contemplate the complexities of how local governments interact with municipalities and other local entities. We, we could set this rule for the Anarundel County Police. The administration, and I'll turn it over to Office of Law, does not believe we have the authority to regulate other jurisdictions, City of Annapolis, the Crofton Law Enforcement Agency, or the Community College, to compel this kind of response. I think, again, you're pointing out a real issue and I would hope that every LEA would comply. I know ours will.
I'm just, you know, if the, if we have this continual argument that our process that we're creating, required by state law, somehow does not reach the Annapolis City Police Department or Crofton or the Community College, I mean, are we basically saying that this whole law doesn't apply to them? Because, you know, that, those are, I certainly don't think that was the intent of the state legislature, but if we're saying, you know, we can't, in the state law, the Administrative Charging Committee has subpoena power to get this and that from the law enforcement agency. The Administrative Charging Committee is really just an arm, you know, it's an arm of the county. Are we basically saying they're, they have no power? I just can't believe that that's what the state legislature was arguing here or was advocating here.
And I'll ask Office of Law to weigh in in a second, but no, that is not how I would characterize the administration's concerns with this. This is putting a specific rule on how that LEA has to comply. The ACC has the power under state law to issue, let's say it's a subpoena, that LEA does have to respond. What this amendment does is you have to respond in this timeframe. I think it's the, this timeframe that the concern from, came from. So, Ms. Blair Klassmeyer.
Sure. So the issue here is that the state has a different level of sovereignty than the county. You know, the state can, can tell Crofton Police Department what to do. It can tell the, you know, it makes state laws. The county doesn't really have that authority over the City of Crofton or the Crofton Police Department. It doesn't have that authority over the Annapolis Police Department. So therefore, that's where the issue comes in in trying to impose stricter, more specific things than what the state law is actually doing.
It's just hard for me to imagine that the state law didn't envision, you know, if we're saying that the state law doesn't give the power to the county or the Administrative Charging Committee, that's really, you know, kind of an extension, an arm of the county, if they have the power to subpoena documents, body camera footage, whatever, if, if there isn't a deadline, isn't that a meaningless power? And why would the state give the county, an arm of the county, a meaningless power? To me, it's, I think it's almost understood. It's implied that, okay, there can be reasonable, you know, reasonable parameters, things to fill in the gaps that the state didn't give to us here because they didn't fill in. And I feel like that's, you know, a theme, unfortunately, throughout this law is the state did not fill in a lot of the details that we really need to, you know, make this, make, have clear answers about what we are and aren't allowed to do. But I, to me, to saying you couldn't have a deadline for it, to me, completely undermines the power that the state did give the county. So a reasonable deadline seems like 10 days seems like a reasonable deadline. If someone said, if someone here has an argument why 10 days is not a reasonable deadline, I'm all ears, but it's hard to imagine the state would just give power to the county and then say, well, we'll give you power, but we're not gonna actually give you any way to make that power meaningful because we're not gonna give you a deadline? I'm, that's, I guess, a rhetorical question and I'm not sure who was first, Mr. Lacy. I'm, excuse me, Mr. Vol... Mr. Volkey.
It's getting late.
Mr. Lacy is not here, Ms. Lacy. Mr. Vol, do you know who was first? Whoever was.
Ms. Lacy.
Ms. Lacy.
I was, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just gonna point out that Ms. Blair Klassmeyer is a very able attorney for the county. It does not represent the City of Annapolis, Crofton, AACC, any other possible agency except the county. The county would be regulated by this and let those other agencies come and do whatever they want because this contemplates that the investigation is already done. 10 days is a reasonable period of time. When you're telling someone, go back and retrieve these documents and that video for this case that you just investigated, bring it over here so we can review it. So I think we're in no danger by passing this. Let, let Crofton and AACC figure it out. It's not our job.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually agree with Ms. Lacy. I think, look, we, it's funny, when you were saying, what you were saying about who we can regulate, yeah, I guess we can't regulate them, but we could pass something that says they're impacted by it and they could come back and tell us pounce and, you know, and that's just how it works. That's the difference with the state versus us. With a state, they are under that regulation. So I guess what I'd like to understand from the police department's point of view is taking away whether we have the legal authority or not to do this for Crofton or Anarundel Community College, et cetera, do you have a problem with this on the substance as it would regulate Anarundel County Police Department or Annapolis City Police for that matter? Do you all have issues with this? And again, I'm gonna say the same thing I said before, just kind of plainly, I just need to know because it would be helpful for my vote.
Rhonda McCoy, Annapolis Police Department. I have no problem with it in substance, however, I think that it needs to be taken up and I need to go back and speak with the mayor and the city council to see. I think that this could be solved through an MOU, but I can go back and talk with them about that.
Thank you for that insight. Oh, and I have lights over here. I'm just, I'll just quickly jump in and say, hey, if you are willing to do that, that sounds great. We could always pass the amendment and then if they're like, you know, we can't come up with some agreement, we could always back out next time. Okay, I'm just gonna go in order because I'm, actually, Ms. Fiedler or Ms. Hare? Do you know who was first? Go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So taking that into consideration, is it possible, and I'm gonna give body camera footage as an example because I know that that can be held up the longest, is it possible to res...
respond within 10 days of a request? And in that response, could the response be that we cannot release the body camera footage? I mean, does that suffice in that circumstance? Because...
Well, when I asked for the MOU, I would also ask that special circumstances be put inside the MOU, that if I cannot respond within 10 days due to an unforeseen circumstance, that, you know, we be given more time.
And the same would apply for us. As in our policy, there are exceptions to release. So, you know, tying us into 10 days is, you know, I guess, a little restrictive for those cases that are exceptional unless you write an exception.
I guess I'll agree, except this whole law is the police accountability law, and if there's no deadline, you know, I certainly understand that there's gonna be exceptions, and I think we can all agree that there are certain reasonable exceptions, but at the same time, like if we don't put a deadline, where's the accountability? And that's not directed at you. That's directed at the worst imaginable law enforcement agency. Just imagine, you know, sometime in the future, we end up with, you know, terribly corrupt, you know, horrible, wants to avoid everything, investigation law enforcement, which is, I believe in my heart that is not what we have in Anarundel County, but imagine, I think we have to write a law that speaks to that because if that's the law enforcement agency that we have, we need to absolutely be able to hold them accountable. So I feel like we have, there needs to be, you know, that deadline is the accountability. And I see other lights. So Ms. Hare, I think you were next.
So this is a question, I think, for the sponsor, but business days or calendar days?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Did you, is it business days or calendar days? Just so, I'm trying to think of, I typically think of 10 days as business days and you get two weeks, but I just was curious.
That's the typical interpretation of 10 days.
I was thinking 10 business days.
Okay.
Then I think it should say 10 business days because I think...
We could bring that amendment next time.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you. I'll just ask the Chief of Police. Can you tell the Crofton Police Department what to do?
No, sir. I could have a conversation with them, but I don't understand.
Well, and I understand we have the Annapolis Police Department represented, but I don't see anybody here from Crofton, I don't see the Community College, and we're talking about these nebulous things of MOUs, and I think they have low intent. My concern is filling in the blanks, right? We want citizens to get a response. That's the point, and I think that's what the intent of this. But my fear, and again, there's been several circumstances I've seen where if we pass a law that has holes in it, people are gonna challenge it, and then we have nothing. And I want, obviously, we want to get to the best where we can, but, you know, for something like this in particular, we get an MOU with Annapolis, but then the Community College officer doesn't have it, what does that say to the citizens, right? You had a crime at the college in Annapolis, it's okay, but over here? Like, what standard are we having? And so the question is, do we fill in the blank for the state and then somebody challenges it? Or, again, I sound a little frustrated about where to go, but I don't wanna pass something that has that promise and then someone comes back and then we're left with that. Do you see where I'm going with that? And I don't know if you have an opinion on that, but that's where I'm very conflicted.
I mean, you just expressed what, especially upon the initial introduction of this law, all of us felt throughout the state, we were all scratching our heads. How are we gonna have consistency throughout all of these agencies when we have all these different police accountability boards being established in 24 different jurisdictions? We're all gonna be doing things differently, is my point. So, yeah, it's confusing.
Ms. Pickard. Oh, if you'd like to respond, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, and I'm sorry, the wording here, in here, that I'm just looking at, that is probably gonna be a problem. Additional investigation. An additional investigation, that could be speaking to witnesses, you know, especially if there are civilian witnesses, and I have to, you know, call them, say, can you come in? You know, can we get a tape? If they need to, you know, to hear that, depending on what that, what they want us to re-investigate, that may go beyond 10 days. And if I'm gonna say, if I'm looking at probabilities, the probability that that will happen is highly likely. It happens all the time.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
On that specific point, I'm coming from a perspective that this is a civil process. My entire professional experience of litigation for a decade of civil cases is you respond within 10 days, meaning you tell people what you can and can't do within 10 days, and then you negotiate with them and you work it out, what needs to be done. So I'm thinking, we're setting a standard, and others are gonna have to come to the table. You're here tonight. I don't know where the Crofton Police Department is tonight, but they know what we're working on. Same thing with AACC. Where's the sheriff? I mean, we passed this so that they have to come to the table, and because these things can be worked out, because we all have a good intentions of making this process work out, not by looking at this quite so strictly.
If I...
Go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Just very quickly, I think it's an important point that Madam Chair made about how we need to not just be legislating for our great folks now, but looking at what could be bad actors in the future. What, I wanted to make this point because I think it matters to something Councilwoman Lacy just said, and maybe Office of Law, or maybe you can answer this, Ms. Lacy, the, can you ignore a subpoena? The state gave the Administrative Charging Committee the power to issue subpoenas. Can an LEA ignore a subpoena?
Would you like me to answer?
I would.
I still think in the civil world, everything's negotiable. So you get a subpoena, and you call up the other side. That's the very first thing that you do. And you go, hi, I got your subpoena. Let's set a time to talk about this. I need to review it and discuss with my client. And then you meet, and you go over it, and you file your objections, or you produce your documents, but you work it out in good faith because that's what is supposed to happen in the civil process. Otherwise, you have to go to a judge, which obviously is not provided for here. So I think we have to be looking at, when we're talking about a bureaucratic process that we are now creating out of, you know, the ether because the state house told us to, then we have to assume that everybody's gonna act in good faith and fill in the holes as best we can.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fascinatingly enough, my question was going towards where you were headed, Ms. McCoy. You know, this, as long as we've had to discuss both of these amendments here, the Administrative Charging Commission Committee is where the HB 670 placed, within the framework of this entire accountability framework, the subpoena powers and additional investigative powers with the civilian oversight, right? That's where they put that aspect of civilian accountability. Because this is so new, I'm having trouble understanding, for example, the situation with the AG in HB 670 investigating a police-involved shooting, which could also have a complaint against an officer. So the AG could very well still have all that and have not come to a conclusion. So similar to what we were just talking about in Amendment 41, don't we end up with some issues about, with the 10 days here in Amendment 42? Or am I conflating the different investigations that could be taking place at the same time? Because one of the sponsors mentioned, the intention here with the 10 days was that an investigation would have concluded, but I, because we've not really seen anything go through this entire process from start to finish, it seems likely, just like in Amendment 41, that there would be, could potentially be investigations going on at the same time.
We do know that the state is crafting as, you know, well, not as we speak right now, this minute, but they are, they are crafting regulations to govern the ACCs. I can't, you know, answer to say that they would clean this, but it has been brought up to them a number of times that there are not small, but gaping holes in this legislation that you can kind of tie the county's hands, you know, tie the municipality's hands. We would hope that these questions will be answered when they come back with those regulations, but I am gonna preference to say that I am no lawyer. But we can't know, and, you know, so if you do pass something tonight and they come right back around and say no, then you're right back to the drawing board. And I see your face, Councilwoman, I understand that, you know, we all want this to be over, and, you know, we wanna move forward, but we're kind of in a holding pattern with a whole lot of things because the state is kind of dragging its feet and putting so many things that have holes. This is not the only bill that has clear holes in it that we need plugged. It's, you know, could it, you know, could we have problems, you know, with this down the road? Yes, you know, and because I can't know what they're gonna say in a week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, I would caution you to wait and see what they say.
I'm just gonna advocate for a different approach, and you probably saw this coming from the expression on my face. I mean, I feel like it really, you can go either way, right? You can either just wait and hope that they fill in the gaps, or maybe some of them, we know that they're going to fill in, or we are, I would say, hey, let's, you know, write, the professor assigns you the paper and you have a lot of questions, you can go ahead and, you know, draft your paper the best you can, or you can end up turning it in late because you had to ask the professor a bunch of questions, and then, you know, you get a second edit. And I'm sorry, my analogy is very 1145-ish, but, you know, you sort of have a couple options. You can draft it and then go back and fix it, or you can just wait. But I feel like the state didn't ask us to wait. I feel like that, you know, we've got a deadline of July 1st to have this in place, which is about 100 days. So I, to me, the approach would be like, let's put something down on paper, and if they tell us we gotta fix it later, I think we can all agree, we come back and fix it later. Well, maybe we not. We'll find out in this vote. So with that said, Madam Secretary, I don't see any more lights, please call the roll. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
I wanna confirm one thing. Mr. Barron, because I hear different things coming out. You indicated early on, Anarundel would have no problem complying with this 10-day timeline. That was something you said in the very beginning of this discussion. Is that still where you stand in light of all this?
So, to be clear, what I was trying to, our police department will respond to an ACC subpoena. I shouldn't have said 10 days. I don't know what the timeline is. Hearing the chief speak, I probably got my mouth ahead of my brain.
Okay, because I guess what I'm just trying to understand is, can we do it or not? Like, put Crofton aside, and the sheriff's office, and these other entities, which was noted that we don't see them here, and I'm not zinging anybody for that, can the folks who are here say that, to the best of their ability, they will be trying to, say for extenuating circumstances, comply in 10 days? Like, is that something you can do, or is this really just badly written and gonna be a big problem for you? That's what I need to know.
I think it could be problematic. Just, you know, think about the fact that the AG's office is conducting several investigations right now. If someone filed a complaint, we wouldn't be able to comply with this law, this legislation, because we don't have the authority to release a video. Until the AG's office completes their investigation and releases video, we can't, we can't release video in advance of the AG's office.
But then to Councilwoman Lacy's point, just to follow up on that, and I appreciate it, chief, I'm similar, too. Like, you pick up the phone, hey, ACC, we got your subpoena. We can't give it to you because the AG's office has this tied up. We'll give it to you within 10 days after we get it from the AG. Like, I feel like that communication is gonna happen, so I guess that's where I'm struggling to say this is a huge problem because I think that discussion will happen. What's the ACC gonna do at that point? Say, well, you have to give it to us anyway. You're not allowed to go, it's the AG's office. So I think the ACC will understand, is my point.
I hope it's that simple. Yes, sir.
Ms. Fiedler.
Amanda Fiedler, District 5. As the, one of the non-attorney members of this council, I just think that it does not allow for flexibility and those extenuating circumstances beyond the control of the people that we're asking to respond. It doesn't say that specifically in the amendment, that, but be it for extenuating circumstances, that language isn't here. So this is, oh, lose, lose, no matter what.
And I'm just gonna counter to say, like, I think, you know, you can still have, you can have a deadline and still have, you know, you can, you know, have reasonable extenuating circumstances, like if I tell my kids, hey, I'm talking about my students, you have an assignment, it's due on Friday, and then I find out, oh, actually, the kid was out sick for four days and they couldn't work on anything. Well, that's, you know, a reasonable person is gonna say, okay, you can have some extra time and let them do the assignment. I feel like that's kind of, like, reasonableness is, I think we can assume reasonableness is built in here. So with that, I've made my final plug, and I know you did, too. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment 42.
Ms. Pickard.
No.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 42 has been defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 43.
Amendment Number 43. This amendment allows the Police Accountability Board to review internal reports and non-publicly available data from law enforcement agencies, review evidence considered by the law enforcement agencies and the Administrative Charging Committee, and issue subpoenas, interview witnesses, or use other investigative methods as a part of their oversight duties.
Again, this is Ms. Lacy and I's amendment. Go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in the bill before this amendment, it refers to a reporting obligation that the PAB has that comes directly from HB 670, which is that the PAB must file a report, an annual report, on all of the matters that were considered by the ACC in that prior year. So that needs to be implemented, and it seemed to me that while I might imply, read into it and imply to my mind that that means the PAB must have the appropriate authority to be able to confirm for itself whether it feels that whatever the results of the ACC's proceedings were in a given year, you know, that it has all the information it needs to have to be able to make good recommendations for any possible changes to police procedures or whatever else that's in their purview. So knowing that y'all are not inside my brain, I put it down on paper to say, this is what oversight looks like, and with that, I move to adopt.
Rodvian second. Mr. Barron.
This issue is probably one of the more difficult amendments we have. The purpose of 670 is to help restore trust and provide oversight. The state set up a very specific framework for that oversight. Unfortunately, this amendment puts responsibilities and powers into the PAB that exist in the investigatory agency and the ACC. So we oppose, and...
Thank you. Any question? Oh, Mr. Pruski, go ahead.
Again, this is one I wanna hear from the Law Office because I think, you know, community advocates and others, we've heard about that, but I wanna be absolutely clear because I've gotten a variety of opinions from, you know, private attorneys, I even talked to somebody in Attorney General's office, but I wanna hear your thoughts on this because this is something that folks are advocating for, but are we allowed to do it? And I wanna hear what you have to say.
So we've looked at this question very carefully. We've looked at the whole framework. I mean, the framework here... I mean, the framework here is that the PAV, PAB is an advisory entity, it's not an investigatory entity. The investigatory power, you know, as much as, as much as people might want this to be different, but under the state framework that we have to operate under, the initial investigation is with the local, the law enforcement agency, which is, and then it becomes a matter for the Administrative Charging Committee, which also has investigatory powers. And if it goes beyond that, it goes to the trial slash hearing board. I think that's where we ended up the last time. So, in our opinion, the PAB really doesn't have an investigatory function, it doesn't have a prosecutorial function, it doesn't have an adjudatory function, it only has a reporting function. And so, you know, I, there are times when I think about this, that I think that it's just a bad name. You know, Police Accountability Board implies that it does have some other, some higher function, but it's really a reporting advisory entity, and we just don't feel that it has, that the state really intended it to go behind investigations, and to conduct independent investigations into the disciplinary matters. There's, you know, there are reports that come with the various investigation, and would they have access to those reports? Yes. I mean, that's, they're going to have to, you know, explain, you know, they're going to have to know what was charged and what the outcome was, but to go behind that, I don't think the state intended that in the Police Accountability Board itself. The whole adjudatory investigation is, is the other three entities that this bill, the state bill, requires us to have.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, reading the bill, the PAB does have some say in the charging committee, right? Because they're appointing some people to that, and that is the body that has subpoena and investigatory power. So, it's not like the PAB is completely shut out, at least the way I'm reading it, where they can't be involved at all in the process, because if they're not pleased with what the charging committee's doing, they have the opportunity to put different people in the charging committee. Am I reading that correctly?
So, you know, I think it's interesting, though, what the, what the state law says is, if somebody makes a complaint to the PAB, in three days, it's gone. I mean, that's it. It goes to the law enforcement agency. It's almost as if you would be accidentally filing your complaint with the PAB, because the PAB, you know, complaints, complaint's gone. Yes, they do appoint members of the Administrative Charging Committee, and the chair of the PAB sits on the Administrative Charging Committee. I'm going to say, as an aside, and when we're having this last discussion on this last amendment, and I was looking at the powers of the ACC, I'm not entirely, and I have to, I want to go back and look at this, because obviously, we're going to be back here again on this bill, I'm not even sure the ACC, I think what, the language that has to do with subpoenas and the ACC is referring to the law enforcement agency issuing subpoenas. I'm not even sure the ACC is really given the power to issue subpoenas, but I'll look at that again, and come back and tell you what I think about that. But it's, it's a, you know, it's a multi-step process, and I think that what will happen is, they're going to do their quarterly review in the sense of, okay, these many officers were charged, here's what they were charged with, here's where the discipline came out in the end, you know, for the ones that are completed. And I think that if they see serious, I mean, I see what you're saying, if they see serious charges, and everybody is, you know, you know, giving a slap on the wrist, or if it's the other way, where they see relatively non, you know, non-serious complaints, and people are getting disciplined highly, yeah, I think they can start to question that, and they can certainly, I mean, I think that's their whole role, is to say, we're seeing these, you know, these minor complaints that are resulting in, you know, a greater level of discipline than, you know, than would be, I mean, I think that's what their role is, is to kind of see what those trends are, the kind of complaints they're seeing, and where they end up.
Mr. Volkey, to your one question, though, the Police Accountability Board appoints three members to the Administrative Charging Committee. Two members come from the county exec of the local jurisdiction. That's the state law. The state law appoints a majority onto the Administrative Charging Committee, is, we don't have a say in it. You appoint the members of the PAB, and then they select who is on the charging committee. That is the framework the state set up.
All right. Seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 43.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment number 43 has been defeated.
All right, let's see, let's go ahead and at least try and get one more in. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 44.
Amendment number 44. This amendment requires the executive director of the Police Accountability Board to maintain records and a retention schedule for the board, as well as the Administrative Charging Committee and hearing boards.
Again, this is Ms. Lacy. An eyes amendment, Ms. Lacy.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I wish my answer could be quick, Madam Chair.
You got to do what you got to do.
The, the issue that the administration has with this amendment, one, we are hopeful that the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission will issue regs that, that help guide this. There are some Maryland Public Information Act issues that are raised when the custodian for non-county, when we become the custodian for non-county records. So, I did a terrible job of explaining that. I'm going to ask Mr. Hunt, or Ms. Blair Klausmeyer, to actually be a decent lawyer.
Certainly. So, Ethan Hunt, Office of Law, just real quick, I think it becomes a problem if you're, if you're making the county the custodian of records for the city of Annapolis, for investigatory files. The other thing I'll note, making the county the custodian of records for the trial board is problematic, because the trial boards are established by the local law enforcement agency, and trial board decisions can be appealed to the circuit court, and that's a record appeal, and on a record appeal, the agency has to submit the original records. So, the agency wouldn't have the original records, they'd have to come through the county to get them, and submit them within, I want to say, 30 days, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes. So, again, that just means all those agencies need to come to this table, and help us work out all this stuff that we're trying to do here midnight after midnight, right? I mean, there is an obligation to keep records. I think there's at least a central person who is identified in this amendment, that's what this amendment does, and then that person can farm out the delegation of working with all the other agencies about where records are supposed to be. There's a way to do it, and it still has to happen under the bill, so that's what this amendment's supposed to do. That's all.
All right. Seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 44.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment number 44 has been defeated.
All right, and while it is 11:59, I don't think it's realistic that we're going to get through another amendment this evening, so we will hold, what do we do?
It's now just a regular bill.
All right, so, Bill number 16-22, as amended, again, will come back to, I'm sorry, will be heard on, what is our next date? Monday, April 4th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, and with, oh, go ahead, Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, just the point of order, again, I know some of us try and follow the state information for the administration. If there is any updates on the bill as the General Assembly goes, whether it's a work session, it would be beneficial to the public and the council to have that information. So, again, you have a lot more staff than I do to kind of monitor that, and I know the Law Office as well, so if there are changes or updates as it goes to the General Assembly, I would appreciate that.
We are, we are watching all the legislation at the General Assembly quite closely. The other place we're watching is as these regulations are being, we're waiting with bated breath, as these regulations are being drafted and promulgated by the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission. I know Mr. Hunt and the Office of Law would be happy to give the county council a briefing on these regulations, once we actually know what they'll, what are in them.
Thank you.
And I'll just say that my glares of frustration are not directed at any of you, they're directed at people not in this room. So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second, Allison.
All in favor?
Aye.
County Council is adjourned until April 4th, 2022, Monday evening, 7:00 PM. We'll see you then.